All right, welcome everybody. It's Sunday afternoon. It's two o'clock here in sunny Santa Fe. I'm looking out the window in front of me at the beautiful mountains. And we're here at Santa Fe Skies RV Park, which is the nation's only solar-powered RV park. They have eight hundred and ten sun-powered modules with a $1.2 million system. And don't be jealous depending on where you are, but they get paid what expense a kilowatt hour for what they produce here. So this system is pretty neat. And all the RVs that are parked here are running off solar, which is great. So we are coming to you powered by solar right now, actually. So my name's Kathy Redson. I haven't done any of the study sessions yet, but we are trying to use these weekends, you know, prior to the exam. I know a lot of you are preparing. And even though these sessions are relatively informal, as we kind of work through these problems together and provide some answers, kind of came as a brainchild of Richard yesterday when he sat down to make some PowerPoints on some of the problems that were out there and thought, "Well, you know, instead of me just sitting here on my own making these PowerPoints, what if I log in, set up a session, and let the participants go through it with me?" And so it could be a little bit slower pace as I build these solutions and give people a chance to kind of, you know, find out the methodology of kind of working through some of these problems and how you approach it. And, you know, in most cases, there's more than one way to approach these things, as long as you're utilizing all the correct principles. So the content domain number three that's coming up tomorrow night, we have Janet Hughes from Ontility. And Janet's been in the solar business for over thirty years, and she's been a master electrician for eighteen years. She is one of the prominent solar installers in Austin. She had a company there called Janet's Electric. And then she, Global Solar, Global PV Design was a company she had for a while. Then she started Advent, which was a training company back in 2009, which ultimately merged with Ontility. So she's got a lot of experience in installing systems, has done things from the smallest residential, you know, off-grid direct PV systems, all the way up to large megawatt design.
I was trying to call in and I couldn't figure it out at first, but I just had to hit line one, so I'm good.
All right, you in? Everybody in?
I'm in.
Okay. So anyway, Janet's gonna be great, and she's got a lot of experience. And so what we try to do ahead of these webinar sessions is provide some guidance on some of the problems ahead of time. So you're working in the material, in the JPA, in the textbooks that you have, the Dunlop book, the Mike Holt book, the code book, and getting familiar with where things are so that as your presentation comes on, you can actually make that more interesting. Sometimes pre-learning things when you take courses is actually more beneficial than waiting for this teacher to present it and then catching up after the fact. Because that way, when you walk in for the lecture, you're actually familiar with the concepts that are going to be covered, and things make more sense. And you have the opportunity to ask questions or get clarification on things that before the presentation were unclear to you. And so in addition to getting materials, you're getting guidance and filling in the gaps at the same time. So one of the most, you are issued a code book when you take the NAB-SEP exam. That's one thing they give you. They sign that out. You're not allowed to write in it. You're not allowed to bend any of the pages. You're not allowed to do anything like that while you're taking the test. But you can, you know, so knowing where things are, knowing how things are cross-referenced, understanding how the NEC code book is arranged, is a crucial part of being ready for the test. When you're in the test, it's four hours, and it's a constant sound of pages shuffling. It's almost distracting in a way because everybody flipping back and forth through the code book, you know. When you get a hundred people in a room doing that, it actually gets loud. So, you know, you need to know where things are. And if you get closer to the end, maybe the last hour, you see people starting to sweat and start flipping the pages madly, looking for things, and you wish, you know what's running through their head. That is, if they had spent more time understanding, you know, the code book, understanding where things were, understanding what's in the book and what's not in the book, what they should bother looking up or trying to find or not, they'd be certainly using their time more wisely. On the Friday before the exam, we're gonna have another web session going over some test-taking strategies. And so, you know, we'll talk about some of the things you can do in staying organized throughout the exam, and making sure you answer all the questions, and utilizing your study and scratch paper properly, and the code book properly. But what I want to do today is if you haven't practiced the code book, you haven't started really understanding how to use it, you only look at Article 690, you look at some of the tables in the textbooks that are referenced, and you understand those like 690.7, or, you know, the voltage drop which Richard did yesterday, and some of the other things, believe it or not, there's a lot more in there, and it's a lot easier to use than you may think. So what I want to do is just, I have an electronic version of the book, so if you bear with me, there's gonna be times during this presentation where we slow down a little bit. I am actually running off of Richard's computer. Mine is archaic and won't log on on the ethernet connection, so if I stumble a bit, bear with me. But I'm going to jump over real quick to the code book and show you what... This is an electronic version of NEC code book that you can get when you, through the Oregon, the website for the electrical code in Oregon. And we'll move this over a little bit so we can get back to the beginning. Actually, I'll just type in page one over here. Okay. So this is the electronic version of it, which is great when you can use those. They're searchable, so you can come up here and I can type, you know, the word conductor, and it'll go and actually navigate every occurrence of the word conductor. I can navigate the word TV short circuit, and it'll take me right to the definitions of that. So searching every page in there right now, but it'll take me to the first occurrence of that word, probably it'll be on the first definition page in Article 690. But if you haven't got this, you can search for it online, or you can download it, I believe, on our website through one of the newsletters. And that way you can start, you know, understanding and getting through the code book quickly. You obviously won't have an electronic version during the exam, but at least no matches of things. Okay. Anyway, so what we're gonna do first is go through some of the, it starts out with a table of contents. And by the way, every page in the NEC code book begins with Article, with the number seventy, and that's because that, within the National Fire Protection Association, the NEC, the National Electric Code, is their Code Seventy. There are other codes that they have that are part of the NFPA, but this is the one that deals with electric. So everything in the NEC code book is part of Code Seventy, and things we're dealing with electrical safety, like 70E, which is the safety manual that you should know, all pertain back to electrical, which is under the purvey of the National, whoops, Fire Protection Association. So some things you can find in the table of contents, and you should take some time and review it. This gives you the actual headings for the sections within the code book. For example, well, I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself. So if you look at it, first of all, there are articles within the code book. There are, articles are part of the way it's organized, and there's Article... Okay. So the full definition, NEC contains about one hundred and forty articles, each of which covers a specific subject. So the articles begin, like Article Ninety, Article One Hundred, Article One Ten, I'm sorry, Article Ninety, Article One Ten. These are all articles. Within them, there are sections and tables. Some people, within the articles are parts, which are the Roman numerals, one, two, and if you see in Article One Ten down here, so this is the article number... On acronyms, okay. Yeah, okay. On the box too. I was trying to get the select box. Anyway, it's on the screen. Is that the reason?
Nope.
Okay. There we go. All right. I clicked it at the bottom, but not there. So Article Ninety is one, Article One Hundred, Article One Ten. Then these Roman numerals here pertain to the part numbers. Okay? So those are, that's how it's organized. So for example, in Article One Ten, you see how it says, Article, Part One is general, Part Two deals with six hundred volts or less, Part Three is six hundred volts or more. And so in the section numbers, when you refer to the codes, it doesn't give you the part, but you've gotta make sure when you look through the code book that you're in the right part for the situation that you're in. And the Mike Holt book is a good example of that. For example, dealing with the number of working clearances in Part Two in Article One Ten for under sixty, six hundred volts. We can go right through that page. That would be on page, let me jump to it. Okay, I'm just gonna use the code book. That would be on page thirty-seven. So here we are in the code book. It shows the highlighted ones. As I get into Article One Ten, I'm probably going too quickly here, but it shows where I'm at. It begins Part Two, which deals with under six hundred volts nominal. Try to search it. So there it takes me to One Ten Twenty-Six, or the One Ten Sixteen, and there it is, right there. But here's where it begins with Part Two. So if you don't catch that as you're going through the code section or the article, you, everything that follows that Roman numeral two is gonna deal with six hundred volts or less nominal systems. Okay? So within that part, as you move ahead, you'll notice that all these things here in terms of working space have to do with Article, with systems that are six hundred volts or less. So here's that table, One Ten dot Twenty-Six A1, which is, pertains to one of the problem sets that we have here today. And so if the systems are less than one hundred and fifty volts, like it says here, okay, then if it's Condition One, where there's only live parts on one side of the working space, okay, and there are no live or grounded parts on the other side, then you have a maximum, you have a distance for work clearance from the live parts, okay, to any other, the distance behind you of mandatory three feet. Condition Two says if there's live parts on one side of the space, and a concrete brick wall, and exposed live parts on one side, and grounded parts on the other side, but not necessarily live parts, then you would have Condition Two, which is also three feet. And if you're still at one hundred and fifty volts, and you get to where there's exposed live parts on both sides, that's when you would need, you know, three feet. So when you get greater than one hundred and fifty volts, that you've gotta be into this four-foot range or three foot six range, depending on whether you're in a room where on both sides of the wall, in front of and behind you, you've got either grounded parts or live parts, you know, in the same room. In the Mike Holt book, there's a great illustration of that on, find the page. Shows that on the top of page thirty-three in the book. You'll turn to that page, and it gives you the actual three foot, three and a half foot, four feet, depending on what your conditions are in terms of the amount of voltage in that space. So that's what pertains to systems that are in basic installations where you're operating under six hundred volts. If you move ahead in the code book to down the page a bit, or down the book a bit, where Roman numeral three begins, that's Part Three, dealing with, as you see right here, okay? Boom. That's wrong, wrong one. The Roman numeral three. If I keep going, I'm gonna come back to that one. That was also any of your questions. Moving down, moving down, somewhere in here, the next page, there we go. So starting at eleven, Article One Ten dot Thirty, that's where it's now dealing with systems over six hundred volts. So if you're just flipping through the code book, and you're looking for charts, and if you keep going in this segment, you'll see where there's another table that says minimum distance from the fence, and then on down. You might end up looking at the distance, and here it's minimum distance to live parts. If you're not sure what, if you don't look very attentive what section you're in within Article One Ten, you're actually using, you know, an answer whether selections could be, you know, ten feet. And you're looking it up quickly, and you find yourself in here, minimum distance from the fence to live parts, you end up selecting the wrong answer because you're in the wrong section of this article. So there's articles, there's parts, there's sections, and then there are subsections and sub-subsections. Another interesting thing that's kind of tricky, when I first started using the code book, you look at Article One Ten dot Thirty, for example, that's One Ten dot Three Zero, and you look back to the beginning of this article, One Ten dot Five, okay, which could be interpreted as One Ten dot Five Zero in your mind, right here. This One Ten dot Five comes before Article One Ten dot Three Zero. So they don't put it as a decimal, One Ten Point Zero Five, in the codes, in the sections. So just know that. When you're trying to look up a, an article or a subsection in the code book, you know, when it says point five or a single digit like this, that really should say, you know, if it was easy to follow, One Ten Point Oh Five, for, in the way you need to think about it. Okay? And that way, of course, it would be before One Ten Point Three Oh. So finding things you're looking for, these are just a few gotchas that can slow you down and make you flip into the wrong section of the code book or unable to find something when you see that it's either referred somewhere else in another code or subsection, and then you're supposed to try to go and find it, and you're looking at the numbers on the pages, and you're not, you're not finding what you need. Okay? All right. So another thing to bear in mind, I'm gonna go back to the beginning a little bit, and then once I get through just a basic introduction here, because some people are very familiar with this, and for those of you that I'm boring to tears, I apologize. But for those of you that really haven't spent much time here, it's important that everybody understand how to use this book. Okay? So there's articles, parts, there's sections, there's subsections, and what is where. So one thing I think is interesting, and if you haven't already done so, is a lot of people, you know, make mistakes in doing electrical work by not, or think that the code book is difficult to read because they don't actually take the time to read through Article Ninety, which comes before the actual articles. And I'm trying to back up where that begins. But in Article Ninety, there's a lot of definitions. And I do remember, questions on the test, that I thought I was supposed to have known because I didn't study Article Ninety. I thought it really all began with the definitions in Article One Hundred. And so there were a few things that came up that I made, that I didn't know I had the answer to right in front of me, had I looked up certain things in Article Ninety. So I'm gonna give you a heads up on an area that may come up. Sorry, I'm, my electronic version here, I got ahead of myself, and I got behind myself. Okay. So it tells you about the purpose of the code. It doesn't, it's not the law. Authorities having jurisdiction have to adopt the code. I learned last year in my travels around the seventh district for the JATC, there are jurisdictions in New Mexico and in other parts of the country that are still operating under the nineteen eighty-four edition of the NEC. I was on the phone with someone from SMA, arguing because in their Sunny Boy Seven Hundred, there's not room for a separate grounding electrode conductor, as well as the grounding conductor coming from the DC disconnect, as well as the one going out to the converter. There's only lugs inside the Sunny Boy Seven Hundred for two connections, and you have three. And I was trying to figure out how we were gonna do that, and needed to contact them to see if they minded if I had made an attachment penetrating the back of the unit into the actual encasement. And of course, they said that would void the warranty, but I said, you know, in the two thousand and eleven code, you don't have to have a separate grounding electrode conductor coming out of the converter. So the Sunny Boy Seven Hundred is code compliant with the two connections in the rounding lug that it has, the way the two thousand and eleven code is, but it's not code compliant for a two thousand and eight code without adding a Polaris, I mean, I'm sorry, without adding a separate bonded rounding lug that has abilities for you to attach more than two attachments. So he was telling me, well, what I needed to do was tell the authority-having jurisdiction that they needed to move to the two thousand and eleven code, because it's the law. This is an SMA tech support guy. I said, "I don't know where you're from, but the AHJ, they decide when they're gonna move." And some move as soon as the code is announced, and start training their alignment and their inspectors and their people to operate to that code level. Others wait. I know that the state of Louisiana, up until recently, I think they actually skipped the whole two thousand and eight version of the NEC, and went from two thousand and five right to two thousand and eleven. So when you're doing work, and when you're trying to understand what you need, which code you need to adhere to, it is the authority-having jurisdiction's right, if you will, to decide whether or not to adopt these recommendations, you know, or not. And then even when they decide to adopt a particular code version, they can actually elect not to adopt certain portions of it. So when you're doing work outside of different areas, you've got, you know, it's really important that you understand it. So there were questions that, you know, dealt with this. And in the back of Section Ninety, it talks about this, and there's also a pretty good discussion in the Mike Holt book. And I came across something last night, and one of the problems we'll get to in a little bit, that talked about how, you know, there are certain fine print notes, or informational notes, or exceptions that come out in different subsections of the code, that some, you know, things are allowed with special permission. And it was a question I remember on the test that I took that said, who's, who would be the authority granting permission to do something that appeared in the code book with a note as some sort of special permission? And when it says that, if you don't know what that means, that doesn't mean the customer gives you that permission, or the supervisor, or the journeyman, or, you know, the building code, or the fire marshal. It really is, you know, the utility or the authority-having jurisdiction from a code perspective that we either have to allow or not allow you to do something according to that special permission. So the multiple choice answers were, who's, who would be the person to grant, you know, the permission under this article to do X, Y, Z? And when you look it up, you know, the correct answer was the electrical utility, you know, authority-having jurisdiction, not the customer, you know, not the installer, not the supervisor, or the foreman. And, you know, where to get guidance on that is actually in Article Ninety, but then again, you know, that can be something you gotta read through. And there's a really good section in the beginning of the Mike, of all the Mike Holt books that discuss some of these parameters of Article Ninety. And whose permission it is, and what it means to have permission, what it means to have something that's listed, what it means to, shall not, shall, must not, must, you know, all those things. So please, take some time to look over that so that you don't get stumped. And if you need guidance during the exam, remember that there's information about that in Article Ninety, which under normal circumstances, you might not even have a, you know, the occasion to read. So the code book is, this is where it talks about enforcement. Here's exactly what I'm talking about there. Okay? So let me shift this over a bit and see where it actually describes the situation I just talked about here in Article Ninety. This was on the exam. And, so here it is. It says, "Request for special permission may be made in writing to the authority-having jurisdiction. Special permission must be granted in writing and shall be obtained prior to the start of the electrical installation." So, code is, and then, so just read through this, Article, Section Ninety Point Four, and there was the answer to that question. Okay? Before I jump off this page, what I was just about to get into is this part over here on the left, how the actual code book is organized. And it's provided into the introduction in nine chapters. Chapters one through four apply generally, and chapters five, six, and seven apply to specific occupancies, special equipment, or other special conditions. The latter chapters apply, supplement, or modify the general rule. So things like wire sizing, grounding, overcurrent protection, definitions, general principles are all gonna be covered in chapters one through four. That's why, to be able to do, you know, this and to pass the exam, you have to be able to know a lot more than just Article Six Ninety. To read this, what that means is Article Six, okay, or Chapter Six, which contains Article Six Ninety, has special conditions pertaining to installations like solar. So that's where chapters one through four always apply, but when you're reading through Article Six Ninety, it'll say, you know, the grounding must be done in compliance with Article Two Fifty dot One Twenty-Two with the following exception. And so the reason Article, chapter, or Article Six Ninety was written is so that you're gonna see things in there that might override under special conditions pertaining to PV systems, things that would normally be done a certain way, as defined somewhere in chapters one through four. Chapter Eight covers communication systems, so the good news is, you probably won't have to bother much with chapter Eight. And then chapter Nine has all the tables that are applicable as reference, things like your ohms per kilofoot tables, and things of that nature that will be covered. So here's a great diagram of that. So chapter one is kind of general information. Chapter Two is wiring and protections. That's where you're gonna find things about overcurrent protection, grounding, things along that line. And then when you actually are sizing wire and working with things like that, you'll find that in chapter three, and then other equipment for general use. And then chapters five, six, and seven supplement or modify those chapters, and then you've got chapters... got Chapters 9 and the annex. Uh, kind of a tricky, tricky thing, they could have you in the, um, exam, look up something in an annex, and understand that the annexes, uh, don't, are not mandatory. So, they're informational, they're helpful, they provide guidance, but it's not required that you do something if it's listed somewhere in the annex. So, the non-mandatory information annex is contained in the back of the code book, are for information only, and aren't enforceable as a requirement of the NEC. They could refer to that, and then ask you if, you know, what, um, authority having jurisdiction would be required to enforce an annex? And you'd have to know, hopefully, one of the choices would be, uh, they're not enforceable. And, um, you know, people not, that don't know about that, might get snagged up with something like that. Okay, so, if you haven't done so already, the first place to start in familiarizing yourself with the code book is Article 100. I'm not going to go through these definitions, but there are a lot there that's pertaining to things that are referenced in the code book. If you don't understand something, um, or you think, even if you think you do, uh, come back here and, uh, read through it. People that are teaching advanced classes, people that work in the industry a lot, sometimes use words incorrectly, or use words interchangeably that really aren't interchangeable. Uh, for example, conduit body, you know, we think of conduit as, uh, um, as anything that, you know, you're putting wire in, and then there's this word raceway. Well, what's the difference between the two? Conduit would be something that provides access to removable cover, the interior of the system, at a junction of two or more sections of the system, or at a terminal point of the system. A raceway are the actual tubes that can be made out of various materials. So, when you get further down in Article 100, it gives you the definitions, okay? Uh, again, you know, it sounds like you're splitting hairs, but really, um, there's ways they can trip you up in the wording of questions. One of the really important things to know, and this is crucial, are the difference between these three terms right here, and they're right here in Article 100, okay? So, if you're reading a question, and they're throwing terminology around, and you're getting yourself confused, come back, it's defined here, you don't have to memorize this, all right? So, what does it say? Uh, I'm going to shift this over, so I'm not covered up with my pen here, but there's the word grounding, okay? Um, okay. The ECG, or the EGC, excuse me, the Equipment Grounding Conductor. This is the conductive path installed to connect normally non-current carrying metal parts of the equipment together, and to carry the grounded conductor, carry, I'm sorry, together into the system grounded conductor, or to the grounding electrode conductor, or both. Um, it's recognized that the equipment grounded conductor also performs bonding, and for a list of acceptable equipment grounded conductors, see Articles 250, I'm sorry, Section 250. 118. So, um, if you're, uh, that's where you can get that. Grounding electrode is the conducting object through which a direct connection, connection to earth is established. So, that's the actual, um, bar that gets hammered down into the ground, and depending on how much current it's carrying, um, potentially, that determines the diameter of that grounding electrode, and the length, and how that gets installed. So, that's the actual rod itself, is the grounding electrode. The grounding electrode conductor is a conductor used to connect the system grounded conductor, or the equipment, to a grounding electrode. So, that's the piece that comes out of that main service panel, and runs down, and connects to the grounding electrode. Um, and that would be some sort of point, point on the grounding electrode system, which can sometimes be a metal pipe in a building under certain circumstances. So, um, grounding conductor, that's usually a neutral, um, in an AC circuit, um, it could be the green conductors that run through the circuit, coming on the DC side, and ultimately, that will end up getting bonded to a bar that connects to a grounding electrode conductor, and ultimately, to a grounding electrode. So, that's why sometimes in John Wild's articles, he refers to the black, um, wire, or the negative on the DC side, as the grounded conductor, because ultimately, you know, where that passes through a junction box, into a combiner box, into a disconnect, into the inverter, into the AC disconnect, and ultimately, to the distribution panel, that conductor is going to ultimately ground to that grounding electrode conductor, and to the grounding electrodes. So, that's its purpose, is all the way through the system. If you follow that, you'll see that ultimately, at the last point, it connects to a grounding electrode, and bonds down to that grounding electrode conductor. So, that's why he calls that one the grounded conductor, okay? Um, the hot, the red on the DC side, the L1, L2, red and black on the, on the AC side, or the red, black, and blue in Austin, or the red, black, and orange in other jurisdictions, L1, L2, L3 on a, um, a three-phase system. Those are the ones that are ungrounded, because they're the ones that are live, carrying the current. And so, they're ungrounded, and they run through the system carrying the current to, um, throughout, you know, the DC side, and connecting up the AC side, um, as the live lines, and that's why they're ungrounded. They don't ultimately connect to the grounded electrode, or the grounded electrode conductor. They, uh, they ultimately connect to the load, and carry the current. So, they're ungrounded, they're live, they're hot, and they're also always referred to as the ungrounded conductors in the, in the circuit, okay? So, make sure you, I know this is confusing, because they all sound similar, but if you stare at some line diagrams, and there's some great diagrams in the Mike Hope book, as well as in the NEC handbook, you start to get a feel for this stuff, and, uh, it's not as confusing as you think, okay? Um, all right, a couple of other, uh, neutral conductors, okay? Let's see what that means while we're on the subject, right? Conductor connected to the neutral point of a system that is intended to carry current under normal conditions, neutral point. Common point on a Y connection in a polyphase system, or midpoint on a single-phase three-wire system, um, uh, or midpoint on a single-phase portion of a three-wire delta, directing, direct current system. So, if the neutral point of the system, the vector sum of all other phases within the system, um, that neutralize, that utilize the neutral, or just picks the neutral point, is zero potential. So, that's that, um, usually neutral, intended to carry current under normal conditions, but that one is, is the one that ultimately gets bonded, um, to ground, okay? All right. Live parts, okay, that's important to understand, but we just went over, as far as, um, working clearances, energized conductive components. So, it says clearly in those working space questions, you know, there has to be, like, for example, under 150 volts, it said, "Three feet distance between live parts." That doesn't mean the wall that the panel is mounted to, or the wall that the inverter is mounted to, that means the actual space between the terminals, they're inside, it might be two or three inches extended from the wall when you open up the cover, and then the actual breakers on the other side. So, the room itself might need to be even bigger than that, right? So, there's ways to get caught up in that. And why, why doesn't that have to test on that? Because, you know, a customer builds a equipment room, or a mechanical room, that they have things installed in, and it was designed and built out according to code, the inside of that small room might have only been, you know, three feet wide, or three and a half feet wide, thinking that the equipment would be about six, you know, inches off the wall. And then, there's a beautiful wall in there that's not being used at all, and they say, "Well, you can just put all the inverters and stuff in here." And, uh, not according to code. If you're having live parts, opposing live parts in the same room, and especially PV, where you might see voltages well exceeding 150 volts, um, coming in on the DC, you know, disconnect prior to the inverter, then you would need four feet of clearance there, okay? Um, and if that room is built that way, you know, a good installer that understands the code would say, "I'm sorry, I can't put it in this room. I know it's beautiful, beautiful empty wall here, uh, but it's not far enough away from this wall in order to be code compliant." So, these are the experience things that people that do solar for a living come across, when they deal with customers on a regular basis, and know their code. And so, that's definitely the kind of thing that NATSAP, um, when they say you're a certified installer, and you're going out to do site inspections, and things of that nature, um, you know, part of your, the reason why these things are tested in the NEC, I mean, the NATSAP test, is so that you, um, would walk into a room like that, and a customer telling you, "This is where I want it," and be able to say, "Well, I'm sorry, sir, you know, you can't have it." Um, okay, so, in the, when you're dealing with MEMA ratings, which is one of the problem sets. Dry location, okay, but not, not normally subject to dampness or wetness, classified as dry, maybe temporarily subject to dampness or wetness, as in the case of a, a building under construction. Um, wet locations, installations underground, or in constant slabs, or masonry in direct contact with the earth, in locations subject to saturation with water or other liquids, such as vehicle washing areas, and in unprotected locations exposed to weather, okay? You're going to have to sum up that one in just a minute. Um, all right. Overcurrent protection. Overcurrent, any current in excess of the rated current of equipment, or the impasse of a conductor, may result in an overload, some overload, short circuit, or a ground fault. Um, okay, so, overcurrent protection device, uh, this is one that stumped me until, you know, all my life I've heard of fuses, and breakers, and, you know, OCPD, you know, and I get into this, fuse or break, and they're rated, they're rated in terms of their interrupting rating, understand what that means, um, they're rated in terms of whether they can be backfed or not. Pretty much all, um, breakers that are being manufactured and sold today are capable of both pushing power out to loads, as well as accepting backfeed, but if something, if it's not labeled, that's usually the case, but if it's labeled that it's for servicing loads only, uh, then you cannot use that as a backfed breaker. And I do remember there was a question that got at that concept on my test. Um, sometimes, getting through these code books reminds me of those questions that I, um, forgot, um, after I left the test, and went, uh, some attitude adjustment. Um, okay, so there's that definition of raceway, gives you all the different types of conduit, all the different types of raceways, and what that means. Another, who would have thought, the difference between rainproof and rain tight, okay? Um, but there's, they can throw that in a question. So, uh, do spend time here with these things, Article 100, because it comes up in the questions. And, um, here's one that's getting a lot of attention. And, uh, in fact, there was a whole article when the 2011 code book came out last year about this definition of qualified person. And there may be a question on this, because, um, this was unprecedented change in the 2011 code book. Um, one who, you know, qualified, are you qualified? Yeah, I went to a class, I'm qualified. Um, not according to any, that has an actual definition, and in fact, it's defined specifically in, um, the NFPA 70E handbook, that is listed in the NATSAP, as one of the resources you should have, um, but it's gone ahead here and defined better, and we'll get to that in Article 690 today, but, "One who has the skills and knowledge related to construction operation of the electrical component installation has received safety training to recognize and avoid, avoid the hazards involved." Um, if you look to, I'm going to go jump to Article 690 really quick, uh, this is what got all the hullabaloo, and if you look at some of the, um, comments before the code book came out, of, um, what, uh, people were saying about the code book, and, um, I want to get it again. Uh, I, I'm not sure exactly which one it is. I'm just going to keep sort of getting here this way. I think, um, I got a code book here, I'll jump through. 690 dot 7, there we go. Want to show you there, they changed this word definition of, uh, qualified person, okay? So, take a look a little bit, see if, that's what that code book is. This is a new one, or, okay, so, start here, this is the beginning of that section. And again, each, um, article has its own definitions, and so that's another thing to pay attention to, if you haven't already. And as we go through, some labeling that's required. I'm going to come back to this, but I want to show you, now says, related to qualified persons.
What's this? Shit.
Okay. Hopefully, we're getting there soon.
I totally forgot, Dave.
Are you done? Give me one second here, go look this up specifically. Then, we're going to go and solve these problems, so. Yeah, here, I'm just looking something up real quick. Well, maybe we'll come across it later, but just know that in Article 690, there's a new reference to what it means to be a qualified person, and what it says is that you have to have had training specific to, um, uh, photovoltaics. And therefore, um, people that, even if they have a electric license, technically, need to be, receive some sort of training in order to be qualified to work on photovoltaic systems. And, I'm just looking for where that's referenced here, in the new code book. Um, is it in Article 700? Okay, that's, I'm not finding it. Anyways, Richard looked that up, and then I'll get back with you. Okay, so, uh, back to, um, we're going to now jump into the problem sets, and I'll be coming back to the code book, and, uh, I just wanted to leave you with the notion that, um, you need to spend, understand how the code book is organized, and, uh, it's definitely one of the changes. Okay. Um, so, let's get to the problem set, and we'll start going over some of the answers that'll take us back into the code book, um, as needed. Okay. So, Article 705 dot 6. Let me take it back, and then just read it real quick. If I put it in here, 705 dot 6, and here's what it says. If I put it in here, 705 dot six, and here's what it says. Dot oh six, we gotta go up here, this is what I was referring to. System installation, says installation of one or more electrical power production, here's where I'm at, installation of one or more electrical power production sources operating in parallel with a primary source of electricity shall be installed only by qualified persons. See Article 100 for definition of qualified persons. In solar, what that now means is somebody that has received training with respect to safety, as we saw there in Article 100. So, if someone's working with solar equipment and they haven't received training specifically in working safely with portable takes, then technically, they do not qualify, even if they're a licensed electrician, to work on solar. This is something that in an issue last summer in 2011 in Solar Pro, several people were commenting on and saying that this was unprecedented, that you needed special training relative to the equipment, because generally, you know, journeyman or master electricians are licensed in most states to do any kind of electrical work. And then here they're saying that they must be installed by people that have received that actual safety training in that type of equipment. So, that's a big change, and got several pages and pages of comments during the review cycle for the 2011 Codebook release. Okay, all right. Probably lost some time there, but, okay, so, let's get into some of these code questions that I wrote yesterday, and let's do where we're at. So, okay, in a separate outbuilding, this is one I was kind of alluding to, even though we were talking about the code, on a college campus, three 120 volt, two 80 volt subpanels are mounted inside the building along with electrical equipment for an HVAC system. The customer wants a PV installer to install the equipment consisting of a 5 KW, 240 volt PV inverter disconnects, and a rec meter in the same building on the opposite wall. What is the minimum distance between the subpanels and the PV equipment? So, I didn't say live parts, I didn't say the wall. NABSET sometimes is vague like this, and you know the code is specific where it says live parts to live parts, and then they'll say, you know, what they want. So, we're gonna, you have to sometimes make a leap of faith, and I deliberately was not specific, because really, regardless of whether it's live parts or not live parts, all the other answers, other than the correct one, are indicative of something smaller, and do we have volts greater than 150? We do. They do in the subpanel, that could be a 208 volt circuit coming out on a, that could also be the 240 volt inverter that the solar system is gonna have. So, the only answer here that would work then would be this one here, which would be, indicate the correct answer here. Handle panel up, I can fill a check mark next to the one that I want. Okay, so, that would be your answer for this one. Okay, we went over that just now in depth, so I'm not gonna spend too much time there. Problem number two. The height of a ground mounted PV system or pole mounted PV system with exposed live PV wires coming out of a junction box in the back of the module are live wires. Some modules, they come out, and if you open up that junction box, you void the warranty. And so, without manufacturer's approval, which you would find in their materials that come with the equipment, if you're not allowed to open up that junction box, and it's got cables that come right out of it, and how are you going to attach conduit to something like that? And if it's coming right out of the junction box, and you can't put in a strain relief that goes right into conduit, you may not be able to use those modules if that installation is not of a proper height. And so, they could show you the back of, a picture of the back of a module that shows one of those kinds of junction boxes, and then you need to know that based on, you know, the manufacturer's recommendations where you cannot open that junction box to change the strain relief around those conductors, you'd have to either mount that thing above a certain height, or not be able to use those modules in that installation. And so, as an installer, you know, you go online, you order the modules, you know, this is the kind of question that NABSET wants to hit you at, because these are the mistakes that are made in the field that then lead to people, customers, favorite equipment that can't be used, installers trying to make do with things based on, well, the pole's already built, or the ground mount's already there, or whatever it is, and, you know, they just kind of wink and a nod, do things that are not code compliant. So, this is a tough one to find. If you look in Article 690, okay, it says, I'm gonna find this before I actually start scrolling through the Codebook, it's not moving very fast, and I try to use it, and I'm about to become grandmother, but I am not. But, in Article 690, it says that, you know, when you're installing something, that it cannot be readily accessible unless the cables are not in conduit, it cannot be readily accessible. So, where does it say that? Okay, so, where it says they cannot be made readily accessible, then you gotta go to Article 100, where we looked at that a second ago, it says readily accessible means that people would have access to those exposed live parts. So, then what live parts means is parts that could be carrying, a live part is something that could be energized and carrying current. So, is a PV cable coming out the back of a junction box a live part? Yes, it is. So, right there, I've looked in Article 690, I've looked in Article 100 in two different places to define those terms, and now, you know, so what is that maximum height need to be, to not be readily accessible? In Article 100, it gives a definition of that, back to Article, the code for a second. We're gonna go to, oops, where this answer actually is, 'cause I had a master electrician of 30 years argue with me on this during a class last year, and say, "Where does it say that in the Codebook?" Well, the answer is to that. I always thought it was six feet, you know? So, I said, "Well, here it is, let's find it." So, I happen to know it's Article 110 dot 27, and here it is. Here's what it says, "Live parts guarded against accidental contact." So, except as elsewhere required in the code, live parts of electrical equipment operating at 50 volts or more shall be guarded against actual contact by approved enclosures or by any of the following means. So, by locating it in a room, vault, or similar enclosure that's accessible only by qualified persons, by suitable permit, substantial partitions or screens. So, if it's less than that, that means you could have it surrounded by a fence, which is okay, so if you've got a small, you know, a ground mount system where you want the parts to be exposed, what you might think of then is to put a fence around it, that is acceptable. If that, that, any openings or such partitions are sizable, okay, that person's not likely to come into accidental contact with live parts or bring objects into contact with them. A location on a suitable balcony, gallery, or platform elevated and arranged so as to exclude unqualified persons. How high does that have to be? 2.5 meters, or, which is eight feet or more above the ground or working space. So, there's your answer. Go back to the question, and we see that, using this, right here, eight feet is the only acceptable answer. Okay, so, that's where you find it, and that took four different places in the code, and I'm sorry I don't have it readily available where it says that systems must be guarded within Article 690, but I do know that it says that. And I will come across it in a little while, point that out to you, sometimes I'm not exactly, uh, where the words are, um, make reference to that readily accessible, but it's in there. Okay, let's look at the next one. And by the way, this one was on my version of the exam in September of 2010, so, I'm not supposed to quote actual NABSET questions, but this was one of them. Okay, back to PowerPoint, and slide number, next slide, please, oh, we got an inserted slide. All right, we're gonna build, problem number three. These are the sample problems that were posted last evening that we did based on the MEC code in preparation for Janet Hughes's lecture. So, what I'm gonna do here is highlight question three off this sample, and paste that into my PowerPoint, and then we'll go up the, so, here I am in here. Okay, "What NEMA rating would be required for a combiner box located on a roof in a coastal community, subject to monsoon rain at various times of the year?" This is situational, you know, you're in, you're doing a system in Hawaii, or in the Caribbean, or somewhere, or in South Florida, or in the Keys, somewhere where you're getting, you know, potentially salt air, okay, that's what coastal community means. So, they don't tell you that per se, but that's what they mean, and they say coastal community, whoops.
I don't get that.
And, okay, so, that's this part here, that means saltwater, that would mean stainless steel, if that had to do with the type of mounting structure that would, you know, that you'd wanna have, or, you know, that would be resistant to corrosion, and, so, just like when you think of boats and the kind of hardware you see for the rails and the chrome on the boat, you wouldn't have aluminum, you know, you wouldn't have things that are subject to corrosion in salt air, so, when you see the word coastal, that's NABSET's code word for something where you might have salt in the air, okay? Monsoon rain, that means not only, you know, sustained weather, you know, like we were looking at, rain tight and rainproof, that means that it's gonna be something that could, you know, depending on the monsoon and where it's located, and if it's on a roof, it's parapet walls, it doesn't have adequate drainage, what if that, you know, devices actually hurt, or actually hosed, you know, we look at the way the NEMA things are, there's a way to kind of make this make sense. So, there's three different choices they've given us here, three, NEMA three, three X, four, and four X. Oh, by the way, this was something that I remember seeing on my test as well. So, let's go a little bit further down, and there's Article 100, and that's where you're gonna find those NEMA ratings, so here we are. Okay, so, definitely it's outdoor use, and let's read what it says. All right, so, firstly, see where it says, oops. This, and I want my pen. Okay, so, here's my enclosure selection, okay, for outdoor use, and these are my NEMA ratings right here, okay? So, it gave me four choices, three, three X, four, and four X, and they've given me this conditions of use, which are a coastal community, okay, which may have corrosive agents, and it might, you know, it's not just rain, snow, or sleet, right? In this case, and it's not, it's actually what we would consider hose down. So, when I look in category three, that's not gonna work, look in three X, that would work with the corrosive benefits, but, and it would work in rain, okay, but it's not gonna work in a hose down situation, in a monsoon situation. NEMA four is gonna work in that monsoon, but because it's possibly subject to corrosive agents, being in the salt air, the only answer that works is four X. Okay, so, that's a lot of mess on my page, but basically, you know, not just rain, you need to interpret that monsoon, and NABSET doesn't tell you this, to be basically like a hose down situation, okay? They didn't, if, we think it might be enough monsoons where it could be the temporarily or prolonged submersion, then we would be looking at six or six P, okay? And it would have to be six P because we need that corrosive element as well, and six doesn't have it. But six P wasn't a choice, so, and if it was, that would be then, you know, one of the things I might write up. When you get to the end of the exam, there's a comment sheet, and depending on you, how you interpret some of the questions, you're allowed to write a comment. One of the reasons it takes NABSET's four weeks to give you your results is they read these comments, and if you were given six P and four X as a possible answer, now it's up to interpretation, okay? Both of them include corrosive, one of them works with hose down, the other one works with submersion. So now, how do you pick, okay? And that's where I would, and they're both possible answers. I would take time at the end of the exam to write up an answer that says, you know, my interpretation of that, and the NABSET reads your description on why you think both six P and four X could be right answers, depending on how you interpret this monsoon rain, and what that could result in on a flat roof in a coastal community. Sometimes they say, "You know what, we didn't think of that, and we're gonna go ahead and take both those answers correctly." And that's why, or they might even throw the question out altogether, based on your comment that says, "You know, I see where you're going with this, and I see that you're trying to be clever using the word monsoon, but honestly, you know, depending on how that's interpreted and what could happen in a particular rooftop setting where that combiner box might be, here's how I'm seeing it." And under those, my interpretation, you know, I'm gonna go ahead and put four X, 'cause I think that's what it means, but, you know, technically, six P could be a right answer if that actually ended up getting submerged as a result of those monsoon rains, okay? And, so, just let you know that you have that ability, and that's why they take the time, and that's also why sometimes you see weird scores coming back, where a passing score is a, you know, seventy one point five, you know, and that doesn't really equally divide among sixty questions, because then they find it necessary to throw out a question because somebody writes in a comment interpreting it. So, you do have that right, and I guarantee, I wrote up four different questions at the end of the exam, and, you know, you have that ability to do so, and do it when you feel that the test is ambiguous, because that's the biggest complaint about this test, that some questions are open to interpretation when they get situational. One question I remember while we're on the subject had to do with safety, and the question said, "Whose responsibility is it to determine when to use personal protective equipment?" Okay, the possible answers were, and maybe I'll just type this up as a question in PowerPoint right now, we can be talking to something that's, woo, those that I weren't hearing in the beginning, I'm using Richard's machine and his sister tech, so sometimes. So, the great answer here, before I move on, was four X, as we saw, and, so, all right, I'm selecting this now, we'll move on now. So, I'm gonna ad hoc insert this question I'm about to tell you about, did I have ADD triggers for that with me? Ad hoc safety question. And the reason I'm doing this now is 'cause I'm thinking about And the reason I'm doing this now is 'cause I'm thinking about it, and this is on my list. Then, whose responsibility is it to determine when to use PPE? And the choices were foreman, customer, PV installer, or employer?
Employer.
You got it. And why do you say? You tell me. Isn't it, when I go, if I'm out there in the field, and I go pick up my, uh, you know, I gotta, I'm about to go over and test, you know, the voltage on a combiner box, um, and it could be high, you know, uh, no one else was up on the roof with me, so isn't it my responsibility as the installer to put up my, my, uh, equipment on, and put on my gloves, and put on my baklava, and my helmet, and my, you know, all that? Isn't it my job when I'm gonna, about, about to go over there and, and take that measurement?
Well, the employer is supposed to...
Say it again.
When it's good to use PVE.
Right. Okay, so, uh, and who's that that gave that answer?
This is Mike Riley.
Mike, okay, great. Um, I, in my OSHA training, I looked and looked and looked and looked for this. When I came out of the exam, all the IDW electricians I took the test with, because they work in the field all the time, and safety is something that can get their company in trouble, can get their employer in trouble, and can get them in trouble. And so, once they're trained on when to use what equipment, on what equipment is being provided based on the nature of the job, they're also told, and when you get out there when you're doing your job, and you don't use the equipment when you're, when you're supposed to, you know, you're fired, because you could get a, subject to a, to a fine, or, or a violation. So, and they work day in, day out in the field, under the supervision of a foreman, under the, after having been trained and provided with the proper PPE by the employer, the actual moment they go to perform something that requires them to put on their PPE, and that when, the way they were looking at it, they thought it was their responsibility. And based on the way their job goes on a day-to-day basis, that's how they're told to perform in the field. And they all came out having clicked the PV installer. But according to OSHA, as Mike said, um, the way this question is written, and it's really word for word out of an OSHA manual, it is the employer's responsibility, based on the nature of the work that's being, you know, uh, performed, to look at what's being required, source the proper PPE for that work, and train people on when to use it in the course of their work they're gonna be doing. And so, uh, the correct answer to this question is employer. But when you talk to guys that are out there in the field, uh, that's not how they see it. And so, this was something that I wrote up, you know? Um, when I'm getting trained, you know, and when someone's actually determining what I need to be having access to, and what they need to purchase for me to have, yeah, that's the employer, okay? When I'm actually out there, and I may be by myself, about to go do something that requires me to put it on, at that moment, at that when, you know, it's my job. And so, there could actually be two different ways of interpreting a question that's, that's kind of vague in a way, if you look at it that way. And, um, so, uh, just so you know, that was kind of one of those splitting hairs questions, um, all right, while we're on it, let's type another one that got, had pulled my hair out. So, let's insert another new slide, and Mike and Steve, you got this one too. Okay, ad hoc question number two. Okay, said, uh, "You are on a job site, and a worker drops a wrench, PV installation is saying, um, uh, down, uh, drops a wrench, and in reaching to retrieve it, uh, next to a battery, um, I have to do it this way, he slash she, uh, ensures a, gets a, um, mild, a small cut, and a mild shock." Uh, "Do the correct course of action..." Okay. Um, "Do you treat..." Sorry for my... "You treat the wound and send him or her back to work? Do you treat the wound and them home? Do you drive them to the hospital or call 911?" Mike, please say.
I'm gonna say, "Treat the wound and send them home so they have an opportunity to, um, fill an incident report out, or contact a doctor," or something like that to...
And, and what makes you think that? I mean, let's look at the question, right? It's a small cut, happens all the time on the job, right? I mean, there's, there's tons of things around that you can get a tiny cut from, but, you know, you wanna treat it, 'cause there's blood and stuff like that, right? And what else? A mi- a mild shock. So, that can happen often. But, um, you know, there was a couple key things here. Um, one, they fill in that word battery, okay? Oops. Back to PowerPoint. Gosh, just continuing fast. I want this. Okay. They fill in this word battery. And, and battery is a DC source of power where, if, if someone gets a shock from it, it's a deep, direct current, and it isn't gonna stop. So, they may, we don't really know how long that person vibrated as they retrieved that wrench next to that battery. They may be a tough guy or gal and went, "Ah, it's nothing," you know? Um, but depending on the duration of that shock coming off a battery, um, it could've been minimal, it could've been mild, and, and they may have used to this and think, you know, um, there's nothing. But, but based on the duration coming from a battery, um, it actually could be more serious than they know. This person could have an underlying heart condition that has never triggered anything because they've never had a shock before. It could be something hereditary that they don't even know is there. And they may be a little agitated or excited as a result of that shock, but, uh, you know, they wanna go back to work, they don't wanna lose time, they don't wanna lose hours, um, you know, and, and as Mike said, the foreman says, "No, why don't you go home? That way, if you're starting to feel weird, you can go to the hospital, you can go to your doctor, you can get treated." Um, that was, um, I have to say, that, that's the one I chose. And, uh, that probably of all of them is, is the least right answer, because if that person lives alone, and they go home, and they end up with suffering some kind of a heart attack as a result of an fibrillation, there's gonna absolutely be nobody there to get them to a hospital. And now you're sending not only home and not to treat it, not to get immediate medical attention, um, but you're sending them into a situation where they might end up by themselves. And so, uh, that, that could actually be the worst of all. If I send them back to work, they might be subject to being unstable. They could drop a tool, uh, do something that causes an unsafe situation for somebody else on the job site. Um, so now they're, without realizing that they're a little bit sleazy, they're not thinking clearly, and, and now their mental faculties might make them a danger to themselves as well as everybody else they work with. So, I would say, according to this, that that's the second worst answer. But then you get down to these two here. Do I drive them to the hospital, or do I call 911? And this is where I wrote it up, where I would recommend you write it up. I didn't write it up, I, like I say, I chose this one like immediate. Um, and, and Mike, I'm not calling you an idiot, I'm just saying, when you look at these questions, I called myself that afterwards, because when you look at these questions, imagine the worst-case scenario. A guy goes home, he goes, "I have a heart attack." And his wife comes home from work at six o'clock, and he's laying in bed in the bed. You know, this is her husband, this is her, you know, partner, it's someone she cares about, and she's out to now get everybody and anybody that is on that job site that has made a decision of what to tell him to do after he's reported that he was injured. And a lawsuit is due. Now you're sitting on the witness stand, and this is how you approach these kinds of cases. Any good lawyer is gonna come up to you and say, "So, you were there, you were working next to him, and what was your first course of action?" Uh, "Well, I told him, 'You better go tell somebody,' you know? And what does the foreman do?" Uh, "Well, I'm not sure. So, you, you thought that was the right thing? You're a doctor, you're trained medical staff, you know better that the person should just go report it to the foreman, you know? You know that?" And in questioning, they start tearing you down, making it look like, you know, you were acting like you were an authority on the matter, you or the foreman or other people on the job site, and made the decision that it wasn't that serious, without knowing anything about this guy's medical history or doing any kind of medical test. Um, so, you know, in, in any kind of document, it's gonna say, "You wanna get them to trained medical personnel as quickly as possible." And that's what OSHA will say. So, the quickest way to do that in a city, or in an area where there's proper, uh, first responders, would be to call 911, 'cause they're gonna, you know, run red lights, do whatever they need you to get there as quickly as possible. As soon as they get on the scene, they're gonna be able to tell whether that person is, um, medically, uh, you know, in trouble or not, in which case they would drive him to the emergency room. Um, if, if it takes time for that person to get there, if you're out in a rural location where you know this person needs to be checked out by a trained medical person, and calling 911 might actually take longer than if you were to drive, 'cause where they're coming from, you know, the hospital is between their dispatch and where your job site is, uh, the right thing in a rural setting might be to drive him to the hospital. So, if, if I was kinda aware of that, this is one that I would, that I would write up and say, yes, obviously, the legally most not negligent, negligent thing to do would be to call 911. That's gonna get the fastest response, get medical trained staff to check the personnel, right? But if I'm in a rural setting, and it takes longer, fastest way to train medical personnel might be to drive to the hospital. And so, under those circumstances, and with this question not being specific about where this is taking place, technically, B could be the best answer to get him quickest to techni- to, to, to trained medical personnel. And unless you're a card-carrying doctor, or someone like that, then you are not that person. And so, that's why numbers one and two, uh, don't work, okay? So, I, I remember this one by heart, because, you know, especially these electricians I saw. What happens in the field? Mild fall cut, mild shock? Sometimes they don't even tell anybody. They just keep on working, you know? Treat the wound and send them home? Okay, that's it, you know? All right, you know, we'll give them a break, and that way if something happens, you can get himself in the hospital and get the rest of the day off, right? And, uh, but, um, neither one of those, and that's reality. Unfortunately, that's why this kind of question exists, because people with a lot of experience, they're out on the job sites all the time, they're gonna instantly go to what really happens out in the field a lot of times, which actually is not the correct thing according to OSHA. And so, that's precisely why NABSET puts these kind of questions on the exam. So, both of the last questions I gave you, related to safety, are interpreted, situational. Uh, there may be questions, questions out there that deal with, you know, non-conductive rails on the ladder, or six feet or greater for fall protection that are strictly, you know, applying definitions and standards. Um, but don't be surprised to see questions like this, where, um, you've gotta be able to think through, you know, what the, uh, most appropriate course of action is to make yourself able to sit there on the witness stand and say to any lawyer, "I did immediately the best thing I knew how to do, which was getting trained, medical licensed, you know, qualified medical personnel on the site as quickly as possible." And in fact, in that Working Safety with PV Systems document, it says, in some instances, maybe the best way to do that, if you're up on top of a rooftop, and it's gonna take you ten minutes to come down and notify somebody, um, pull a fire alarm. They're gonna, that's gonna send a signal directly to the fire station and get somebody there even quicker. So, uh, depending on the circumstance, you know, that could be even the best thing to do. And, um, who's gonna argue with you in a court of law that you didn't do the most best thing to get people there as quickly as possible to check this guy out and determine what was the appropriate thing past that? And if that's not you, then you gotta look at the answers on what you'd wanna say to a lawyer, uh, that gets you out of the, that gets you out of hot water that you did what you should've. All right? Okay, um, let's get back to the other problems now. So, we had problem number three, was about NEMA. Let's get back to, uh, my Word document. Old Word. And question number four was a biggie. And this one dealt with trenches, which is also a great diagram on my Hope, uh, book. So, and, yeah, what we're doing, for those of you that joined late, is that, uh, we're building slide solution sets, this video will be available after the session, just like Richard's is from yesterday. They'll do this yesterday's, Richard's study session, you can download that YouTube video, it's three hours long, with him solving some problem sets out of the NABSET guide. Um, but, uh, we posted these problems last night as a precursor to content domain number three. And so, instead of us sitting here, uh, we thought maybe you guys would enjoy us actually, uh, working through these solution sets with you while you study. So, problem number four. Okay, got it. It's all here. Team, and here we go. All right. "Now, my PV radium is installed on the south side of a farmhouse, um, on the outside, on the opposite side of a covered parking area, used to protect a tractor, a bushwhacker, and a shredder. The trench bringing USD conductors back to the barn..." Actually, this has got a title, it should say, "On a parking structure." Started this in a different direction, and it's on the south side of a, um, uh, parking structure. Let me redo this one. Up the side of a barn. Okay. This, now that's what I want. "While the parking structure on the other side of the driveway, and the parking structure itself holds heavy machinery..." That was what I was trying to get at here. So, um, the barn is where the interconnection is, and so, there's gonna have to be a trench that goes from the parking structure where all this equipment is, underneath the driveway, um, back over to the barn, okay? So, the trench bringing those USD conductors back to the barn with the main service panel running under the parking area, as well as the driveway leading to the barn. Soil is mostly clay and brown dirt, so that's important, um, it's not rocks. So, based on that, the trench depth must be at least, hmm... So, in the Mike Hope book, where this one was described, um, that one, we turn to page, he shows these various trench depths. And... I forgot to read the book, Article 200, somewhere, we're getting into now, Article 200, which dealt with, um... Check the calendar. Hmm, you know, it might not be in the PV book. Might, that diagram has only been in the, um, NEC book. So, I apologize. In his, Mike Hope's book on changes to the NEC, in Article... Sorry, not Article section, I make that mistake a lot, I'm sorry. What is it?
Page 113 of the Mike Hope book.
In the PV book?
Yes.
Okay, page 113. Thank you. There we go. Thank you so much. On page 113, Article 300 dot five, shows a, this is a, I forgot my screen, this is the diagram here that shows the trenches, and it very clearly shows, um, different situations, so if you look that up. Okay, so I've got, there's four columns, UF or USD cables or conductors, which is what this one does, um, but I could, could have a, they could... Um, but I could, could have a, they could, the question should say, could say, uh, different, uh, cable, such as, um, raceway. It could say PVC, not encased in concrete. It could say, um, a different kind of circuit. The GFCI was gonna be, um, ground fault circuit interrupter over there. So, depending on the situation, you gotta look at this chart. And then it says, um, let's look in the code book now. Okay, let's, cause that, you're not gonna get the Mike Hope book in the exam. So, where do we find this in the code book? We'll look in that article, three hundred dot five. And see, in the article, in the article, this is the first reference, interesting. Shall they permit installed raceway? Okay, it was in article one ten they talked about this in the first. The next part, again, is referred to in a seal. Um, protect against damage underground service conductors, maybe in accordance with article three hundred dot five. Multiple references. How hopefully we get to the actual ground physical damage in accordance with article three hundred dot five. Wiring methods, very important. It's about five, oh, we want five. And are we there yet? Are we there yet? Okay. Minimum cover requirements. So, here's how it's gonna be when you're in the exam. Direct serial cable conduit or other raceways shall be installed to meet the minimum cover requirements of table three hundred dot five. Wet locations, describe that. Underground cables under buildings, okay? And so, now let's look at the table. That's what you're gonna need to read when you're using a book during the exam. So, this is direct serial cables or conductors. Um, and it gives certain conditions over here on the left. So, um, it's saying, "Under streets, highways, roads, driveways, and parking lots." Alright? So, uh, we talked about a parking lot, uh, and a driveway leading a parking lot for that heavy equipment that, you know, you wanna have enough cover material to protect against the, the heavy vehicles. That's why, um, and here it says, uh, "Streets, driveways, alleys, parking lots, one and two family dwelling driveways and outdoor parking areas used only for dwelling related purposes." So, that means like cars. So, the fact that I made this a, a barn situation with a heavy tractor and shredders, um, this again is open to interpretation. If this is a residence, you know, where one or two family lives and the way this is, no, you could interpret the eighteen inches that is seen right here. Um, and I think, you know, they go to the, I went to the extent of, um, putting the, uh, is my ultimate term? Um, went to the extent, I didn't give you eighteen inches as a choice. So, therefore, the only correct answer, uh, would be the, um, twenty-four inches. So, that would be this one over here. And that would be right there. Okay? Um, so again, these are the kind of questions NAPSET gives you. They're situational. Um, I deliberately described the soil as clay and dirt. I didn't say rock or concrete. Uh, so, you know, you gotta get a firm understanding of what your, how the conductors were gonna be, um, whether they were gonna be in conduit or kind of conduit. Um, you know, you've really gotta read carefully the question to see what they're interpreting there, okay? Alright, move on to the next one.
Hey Kathy?
Yeah.
Quick comment. Uh, somewhere around that table is a article that, uh, uh, talks about the nature of the backfill that goes back into the trenches.
Okay, yes.
In terms of, yes, you may wanna point that out to them, cause I, uh...
Sure will.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Where are you? Are you listening in?
Uh, well, we're dropping off recycling, actually. I'm listening in, yeah.
So, you're practicing what you preach in sustainability. Alright, um, okay. They get up here. Alright, before I get into that one, Richard mentioned that is a good thing to point out at this time. So, here we are in the code book. And, um, again, table three hundred dot five, knowing where that is. Where do you find out what that trench depth needs to be? What that, um, depending on the situation? So, we're not even anywhere near article six ninety. But does this pertain to a sole installation? Absolutely, okay? And also, um, uh, okay. Cover is defined as the shortest distance measured between the point on the top surface of any direct cable, buried cable, conductor or cable conduit or the raceway, and the top surface of the finished grade concrete or similar cover. So, you know, it gives you the thickness of its, if it's in conduit, you know, how tall the conduit is. And so, if the conduit itself is two and a half inch conduit and the surface, how deep do you really need to go, uh, to be able to bury that two and a half inch conduit and measure from the top of that conduit to the surface? It's split in hairs, but, uh, you may think that. Okay, raceways of food for use only where concrete encased shall be no less than two inches thick. Okay, so that's important to note. Lesser depths shall be permitted where cables, uh, and conductors rise for termination or slices or where otherwise required. Obviously, uh, would be situational and for me, you wanna check out when you're AHJ. Typically, there's an inspection. Once trenches are dug, to make sure that trenches are dug to the right length, they come out and make sure that that's the case and take measurements. But one of the wiring methods listed in challenge one two three is used for one of the circuit types in columns four or five. The shallowest depth of burial shall be permitted. And where solid rock prevents compliance with the cover depth specified in the table, the wiring shall be installed in metal or non-metallic raceway permitted for direct burial. The raceway shall be covered by a minimum of two inches of concrete extending down to the rock. So, there's that, which is also talked about in Mike's book. Um, so, is that what you're pertaining to, uh, Richard, or actually a whole number of tables?
Well, it's, it's, it's an article and it's near that table and it talks about the backfill, as in the nature of the backfill, that it not have any sharp jagged rocks or point. I just remember that being a question on the test.
Yeah, I do too. Let me get to that part of the code book where I can go a bit easier. Um, I don't think that, and that may be in another, table may be in another section. Uh, look up backfill, research and see.
No worries Kathy. I'll just, uh, I'll find it later and, uh, post it as a tweet for the seller move cash.
Okay. Uh, I'm in article three hundred and it does say backfill, um, in article three ten. Okay. And table, table three fifty, there are some notes underneath that, um, define what, uh, those requirements are in article three hundred dot five zero. And then, below that, in subsection E, it says, "Backfill containing large rocks, caving materials, cinders, large or sharply angular substances or corrosive materials should not be placed in an excavation where materials can damage or contribute to the corrosion of raceways, cables, or other stub structures where it may prevent inadequate compaction of fill." So, uh, I'm not seeing a table in this section, but, um, we'll, we'll come across it. Like Richard says, it'll sit out in a, uh, in the newsletter or in a, um, separate communication to you. Okay, so, uh, those tables, those requirements are there and you've gotta be able to understand how that works. Alright, so problem number five. "What is the minimum conductor size for conductors carrying a two hundred amp PV output circuit, um, coming from a combiner box to the DC disconnect in a large central inverter?" Alright, so what are the rules here? Uh, first of all, um, coming from a PV output circuit, um, if you don't already know this definition, um, just about every conductor in any kind of PV installation is subject to, uh, this notion called continuous mode. Electricians I've worked with call that the safety factor. But what that means is that any time a conductor will be carrying current for a long period in excess of three hours, that's considered continuous duty or continuous load. So, as a result, um, you need to always have a multiplier of what could be coming out of that, um, conductor, uh, be coming over that conductor of at least one point two five. So, if the, um, output current is two hundred amps, okay? First thing, that might be the case. That's true. I'm gonna have to just jump in here for a second and get my ultimate back. I closed that by mistake. There it is. Okay. There we go. Alright, um, so I'm in ultimate term. Okay. So, um, it's two hundred amps coming up. And so, two hundred amps times one point two five gives me two hundred and fifty amps under continuous duty. Um, it's also, um, unsubjected to an irradiance spike. So, uh, that would be the second one point two five. So, I take two hundred and fifty times one point two five. That gets me five hundred fifty times one point two five to three hundred and twelve. Okay. So, when I look at my ampacity chart on table three ten dot fifteen B, uh, what do we find? So, looking in the code book, what would be the minimum ampacity, I mean, the minimum wire size to carry the current coming out of that combiner box?
Three hundred and fifty.
So... Alright. So, um, assuming that the combiner box, we, without, uh, we'd need to know what the terminals were rated at. If the terminals were rated at seventy-five, um, degrees, then, uh, the maximum ampacity on that cabling would be, uh, two hundred and eighty-five if you had answered D, which is three hundred circular mils. If the terminal was rated at ninety degrees Celsius, which I'm not sure, in the combiner box they may be, in the central inverter they may be, being that they deal with PV circuits. But only in that instance would you be able to find a right answer in this problem, which would end up being, um, this one here at, um, three hundred circular mils. Okay? Uh, I was facing this question when I was reading through Mike Hope's book. And, uh, he was talking about a continuous load that ran on a two hundred amp circuit and was not on the DC side coming out of a combiner box, um, into the DC disconnect. And so, he used a multiplier of only one point two five in that case because it was not subject to an irradiance spike. So, uh, in answering this question here today, I see I caught myself. My answer key indicates that it's two hundred and fifty circular mils because the maximum capacity on that wire side at seventy-five degrees rated terminal is two fifty-five and that would work, okay? Um, but because this is on the DC side coming out of a combiner box, let, there was some sort of, um, you know, in this, in this instance, um, the correct answer would only be, um, this one and only if the terminals in the combiner box and the, in the DC disconnect were rated at ninety degrees. You look at that chart for wire sizing in table three fifteen, three ten dot fifteen, V sixteen. Um, if the terminals were rated at only seventy-five degrees, then you'd have to have another choice, which is not indicated here. Um, and that would be for a cable size of three hundred and fifty circular mil. So, depending on where you are in the circuit, between the modules and the actual connection to the main service panel, where you have that power conditioning unit, which side you're on to be able to handle or not handle that irradiance spike, um, that's what you've gotta break it down. And, and that's why, when I do these kinds of calculations, uh, that affect ampacity, I always break it up into two, uh, specific calculations. I know some people that teach it, teach it where sometimes it's one point two five, sometimes it's one point five six. And for those of you that don't know, uh, one point two five times one point two five is one point five six. Um, but the way I like to do it is, um, to look exactly what those things mean. On the dumb DC side where there's no intelligence coming from the module through the junction box, possibly through a combiner box, through, up, all the way up to a DC disconnect, all the way up to a charge controller, um, uh, where in the charge controller or in the inverter, you might have some sort of electronics that can handle that irradiance spike. Up until you get to any of those power conditioning units, um, anywhere along those, that line, you've got that irradiance spike, one point two five multiplier. Once it comes out the other side of a charge controller or an inverter, it's, uh, understood that inside that power conditioning unit, that, that power is being conditioned. And if there is an irradiance spike at any moment that's causing an increased current over what that module is normally putting out in terms of amperage, it'll be handled, uh, inside that power conditioning unit. Um, but throughout the circuit, from the modules all the way down to its connection into the main panel, it's always gonna be running, sending current, uh, on any given day for more than three hours. So, always you're gonna have that first one point two five. And I know this has been covered by Mike, it's been covered by Richard, it's been covered over and over again. But when you break it down into these two multipliers at one point two five and know when they apply, what they mean, um, stick to it that way. Don't memorize sometimes one point two five and sometimes one point five six, cause then you get yourself confused. Where do these numbers come from? Why are they there? And that way, no matter what they give you, you can think yourself through. And so, there's your answer, okay? So, I'm gonna go ahead and leave this, um, but technically, um, really, I'm gonna, you know, to make it, you know, where it might be more applicable in a real world situation, uh, most terminals are rated at only seventy-five degrees Celsius. You have to use that column, at which point you would need that, um, choice here. So, I'm gonna put a check mark for this one. Um, if the terminals are rated at ninety degrees Celsius, um, but, you know, this one would be the case if they're rated and, uh, given the choice between the two, because most, you know, uh, combiner boxes are gonna be rated at seventy-five, um, which is probably the most likely in reality. Okay. Any questions or comments there? Um, if you didn't know about those multipliers, uh, you might choose four ought, which, uh, under ninety degree circumstances can handle two sixty. Um, you might have picked even three ought on the seventy-five degree column, uh, which handles an ampacity up to two hundred. So, really gotta know where those multipliers apply and how to read that table. You can't get too much practice, in my opinion. Alright, back to Word. Grab problem number six. Okay. Oh, I like this one. Uh, a raceway carrying PV source circuits, um, cables... A raceway carrying PV source circuits, um, cables runs 28 feet from a junction box to the combiner box on a flat roof, small commercial PV installation. How many cable supports are required? Okay, so, uh, this is also somewhere in the 300s, and I'm not, I mentioned in the back and had code references after I did this, but, um, what the code says, and it says it, ports, it would be, um, I believe it's article, subsection 300 dot 11, so let's see, I had this table up, I was doing this problem last night. Let's see what we see. 310, moving back. Okay. I believe that what this says is, up to its point of connection, you would need, um, one support, uh, 10 inches away from where it actually goes in. Then you'd need another support every 30 inches. And, did I have that in my notebook? So, that's the rule. So, in solving this problem, um, let's multiply it out. So, if I have 28 feet, okay, um, just put a little, 28, um, times 12 gives me how many inches that is, and that equals, 28 times 12, 336 inches, okay? So, my first support is going to be, um, 10 inches from there. So, I've got, um, 336 minus 10 is my first support, that's 326 inches after that. And that leaves me 326 inches divided by 30 inches between supports, gives me 11.2. So, just to be on the safe side, I'm going to want to have one 10 inches on the other side as well. Actually, let me see, I need 10 on either connection side. You actually take that, 336 minus 20 gives me 316. Then, 316, um, symbol thing here, y to by symbol, y to by 30 equals 316, y to by 30 equals 10.5. So, I've got one on either end, 10 inches from where it connects, plus 10.5, you've got to round up, 11, um, that would be 11 plus 2, correct answer then equals, so I'd have, whoops, I'd have 2 plus 10, sorry, 11, equals 13 supports. So, why wouldn't that sub test have something like this? Because that's your balance of systems stuff you've got to go buy, um, you know, and people that do electrical on a regular basis, they know about this code, they know about those supports, but, um, I have seen inspectors come out and want to see that these PV systems have the proper supports, and, uh, that's what you need to have. Okay? So, Article 310, um, 300 dot 22, 23, that's where these, uh, um, codes are, and be able to apply that and know how much you have to buy. So, that's a formula now that might come into a calculation problem on the test, okay? Where you would find that. All right. Go to the next one. Back to our Word documents, and, uh, problem number seven. Okay. All right. So, problem number seven gets us back into article, table 250, uh, 122, which is probably, uh, really, really, really important, um, on page 91 in Mike Holt's book, in the code book, it's, just look at the top, Article 250, Table 122, which is page 70 dash 125. Uh, this tells you what the minimum size grounding conductors for, equipment grounding conductors for grounding raceway or equipment. So, this is what you would need, um, to answer this question. All right. Getting this out of the way. All right. What, the PV output circuit conductor is in size at 2-ohms. What is the minimum size of the grounding electrode conductor? Okay. Um, if you look at table 122, it shows me, uh, on, in the, tells me the amount of amperage that's being carried. Uh, in the code, in Mike Holt's book, it skips a column. It shows you the overcurrent device rating, and then it shows you what the copper conductor ought to be. You look in the code book, it gives you, um, copper rating as well as the aluminum rating. So, uh, what we need to do is to understand how much current will be carried over that, I've got to go back to my table 310 dot 15, when I was at before, and look at what a 2-ohm cable would be carrying. And that's dot 310 dot 15, B16. So, if it's a 2-ohm cable, and I want to size something, I could be carrying, um, on a 90-degree wire, up to 195 amps. Okay? So, if I look at, uh, that's the maximum rating for a 2-ohm, 90-degree conditions of use cable. Come over here, and I see that, um, 195 would make that, uh, a graded, rating of the automatic overcurrent device at, um, 200 amps, and the copper gauge should be number six, and the, um, wait a second, I'm thinking of looking through the table. Hold on, because I want one grounding electrode conductor, which would be one less than that. Hold on. Yeah. What's that?
250, 66.
250, 66. That's where I should be. Excuse me, excuse me. Okay, 250 dot 66. Thank you so much. That's the, that's the chart I was looking at, the grounding electrode conductor, not the equipment grounding conductor. Uh, so, there you have it. That easy to pull yourself into the wrong section of the code book. Thank you. So, table, on, in Mike Holt's book, this question would be answered or explained more fully on page 82. That's where you have table 250, 66. In the code book, um, that table appears on page 115. So, you're going to have the Mike Holt's book to study from, but you've got to be able to, anytime you're looking through his book, work through it with the code book open at the same page, because you will have the code book in the exam, you will not have his book. So, uh, I, I sat next to a gentleman in the test I took who studied using the handbook, and, um, when he got to the test, they gave him the code book, and that he expected to see and remember reading in the handbook, were not in the code book the same way, and he had a very difficult time. I sat and watched him flip pages for hours trying to find things. So, just a good example of that. Okay. So, um, in this case, if it's a 2-ohm wire, the correct answer for the grounding electrode conductor would be four gauge, okay? So, that answer is here, and because we are talking about the grounding electrode conductor, not the equipment grounding conductor, table 250 dot 66 is what applies, okay? All right. Thanks for the correction.
No problem.
Copy. Okay. Uh, I, I put this one in here because of the, the work I've done during labs and such with electricians, and some of the things I've actually seen in the field, uh, where there may be, um, you know, people trying to tie in, um, grounding electrode conductors coming from the inverter, uh, or coming from another grounding electrode from one side to the next. There used to be in the 208 code, if it was further than 6 feet apart, you had to run a separate ground electrode conductor, and there's separate grounding electrode, and then you had to bond those two together. So, you've got one coming down from the main service panel, and you've got another one coming over from another grounding electrode. And it was often that I saw people, uh, taking those acorns that's attached to the grounding electrode and stuffing more than one grounding electrode conductor into that fitting. And so, just to, uh, reference that in the code, um, I wanted to make sure you guys knew that, uh, you need, you're not allowed to do that. Maximum number of conductors submitted per grounding electrode conductor fitting is only one, okay? So, um, you know, so lots of issues at you that, uh, people in the field double lug things. I've seen double lugging in places, in terminals, I've seen double lugging in, uh, in, in panel boards, I've seen, um, double lugging in, in, um, Polaris lugs, I've seen them in grounding, you know, um, lugs, and, uh, that is not code compliant in the field. Gets an installation to where you can, you know, test it, I've seen guys do that, um, then, you know, say they're going to come back and fix that, add another breaker, add another, uh, you know, grounding lug or some other free, get, go and get that free, um, free slot Polaris lug or whatever, and then, and then they never do it. And, um, it's something that is a big, big code violation to be, you know, sharing multiple terminals, and that is not code compliant, and it's not code compliant either when it comes to grounding electrode conductors, uh, even if you've seen it in the field. This is where guys that have a lot of experience, I mean, they'll just test because they've been out in the field doing 150, 200 installs, natural electricians, turnamen that do this stuff, and, um, uh, don't, um, and they say that it's fine, and, you know, they get into a test and they remember what they've seen, just like treating the wound and sending the guy back to work, um, and they don't really understand that that's not the proper thing to do. So, um, I wanted to put a question in there that is about that, okay?
What was that code reference?
Uh, I found that last night in the NEC book, and it's, uh, on grounding electrode fittings. Let's see if I can find that again. I've used multiple books of his, and sure, it's somewhere here in, um, Article 250. But I didn't actually, okay. Without reading, it's one of these, you know, in the article, um, deals with grounding electrodes, grounding electrode conductors in Article 250 dot 62 and 64, page 113 in the code book, and somewhere, I'm guessing, in here, there's going to be a, uh, reference to the fittings, and I will get back to you on where exactly that is. Yeah, I apologize, I don't have the exact code reference on here. I should have done that. Um, it is somewhere in that area. It was a, in Mike Holt's bonding and grounding book is where I think I found that. And I've seen people do that in the field several times. Okay. In the Mike Holt book for solar, it's on page 83 at the top. It's referenced in Article 250 dot 70. It says, "Grounding electrode conductor termination fitting. The grounding electrode conductor must terminate to the grounding electrode by exocomic welding, listed lugs, listed pressure connectors, clamps, or other listed needs. In addition, fitting terminating to a grounding electrode must be listed for the materials of the grounding electrode. When the termination to a grounding electrode is in case of concrete or buried in earth, the termination fitting must be listed for direct burial or concrete encased. No more than one conductor can terminate on a single clamp or fitting unless the clamp or fitting is listed for multiple connections." So, unless it's listed, okay? And that would be something you need to check, um, uh, with the listing, but it does say, so, there may be an exception to that, and probably I should update that on my questions. Say that unless it's listed, otherwise would only accommodate one conductor per fitting. So, I'll go back and fix the question to that, say that. Um, okay. Less, otherwise listed, okay? What is the maximum number of conductors permitted on a fitting? And that would be one. Okay. Now, we'll go on to number nine. Okay. All right. All right. Uh, okay. PV array installed at 100 feet has a 100-foot width of a sloped barn roof. So, it's big, long, wide install going all the way down the side of this bulk roof building, hopefully pacing is done. The installer uses 20-foot lengths of mounting rails spliced together. So, you order Unirack or a lot of these, uh, racking materials, that's how they typically come, in 20-foot lengths, you can order 6-foot lengths, 16-foot lengths, 20-foot lengths, 4-foot lengths, whatever. But if you're doing a big, long run like that, probably you're going to be working with 20-foot lengths. Uh, how many ground lugs would be needed to properly ground the mounting rails? Okay? Um, so you know you've got one mounting rail at the top, all the way down, and one mounting rail at the bottom, all the way down. So, according to the code, how many ground lugs would be needed? So, uh, if you're using, um, the proper attachment hardware for the splicing rails, um, I don't believe the splicing rails require an extra ground lug on those actual splicing pieces, um, but each individual 20-foot length does need its own ground lugs. You cannot just ground one rail, and because they're technically connected together through the splice bar, um, that is not considered a grounded bonded connection. So, you've got to, um, have a separate ground lug on each one of those 20-foot lengths. We've got a rail at the top with five pieces, we've got a rail at the bottom with five pieces. So, in counting out DOS stuff to go out there that day just for that mounting hardware, in addition to each of the modules, if you're going to use ground lugs and any other metallic, um... um, elements that are part of your installation, uh, you're supposed to have a ground lug on each one of them. So, it wouldn't just be two, one for each rail, top and bottom. It wouldn't be five, because you have two rails, the top one and the bottom one, um, it would be ten. Now, now, uh, depending on the authority having jurisdiction, if they interpret that those splice bars in between the rails also need ground lugs, okay? Um, they're, and depending on how those slices are attached between the metallic, I mean, the actual, uh, length of rail, um, you might actually need ground lugs on those splice connectors as well. So, that's something to verify with the AHJ. And, 'cause technically that is a separate piece of metal and could technically be considered separate from the rails themselves. So, if you've got five pieces on the top and five pieces on the bottom with four splice kits in between, that would be ten plus four on the top and four at the bottom, or eighteen. So, again, this is one of those questions that it depends... Oh, boy, let's find my end now. Um, okay. Depends on... The authority having jurisdiction, whether they count those splice bars, um, as... Or not. All right. And any questions there? Okay.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah. On that question there?
I guess for, uh, the number seven, you didn't size it according to two fifty point one, um, six-six for DC grounding electrode sizing. You size, you size it based on the AC? Why was that?
Okay, let me see that. I'm gonna, oops. Right, copy this last one over and then write your question. Back up to problem seven. Um, well, the PB output circuit is DC, okay? So, uh, if you're, I guess, is there, where are you seeing that there's a separate listing for DC?
Um, Article two fifty point one six-six, uh, size of the direct current. Yeah, one six-six, right.
Okay.
Um, I put two ought because it's, because it says on B of that, says where the DC system, uh, the electrodes conductor shall not be smaller than the largest conductor supplied by the system.
Shall not be smaller than the largest conductor?
Right. Because this two fifty point one six-six is size of the direct current grounding electrode conductor, whereas two fifty point six-six is for AC rounding, uh, electrode conductors.
And we are on the DC side?
Right.
Okay. So, in letter B, not smaller than, the grounding electrode conductor must not be smaller than the largest ungrounded conductor supplied by the DC, not smaller than eight gauge. So, if it is two ought, it would have to be two ought. You are correct. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I want to clarify.
There are, no, that's great. I'm, uh, I'm gonna check something out. DC Systems, Part Eight. Very, very good. Okay. So, depending on where you are in the circuit, if I was coming out of the inverter, you know, coming, um, out of the inverter or between the AC disconnect and the main panel, where that's on the AC side, um, then my other answer would've been correct. If I'm coming out of the PB output circuit, which is absolutely on the DC side, um, and I had a, um, uh, two ought output circuit conductor, and I was, you know, writing that down to an equivalent grounding conductor, perhaps, uh, on a ground mount system that's far away, where you have to have a separate grounding electrode conductor out on that ground mount, or a pole mount system, um, absolutely under a direct current situation, Part Eight, uh, Table two fifty dot one six-six is what applies. Thank you. Okay. Ten gauge conductors have been chosen as a properly sized conductor based on the expected, on the current expected from a PB output circuit for the ungrounded conductors. Uh, this actually came up in Mike Holt's lecture, and when we were looking at this yesterday, we found where this actually does have, um, a, uh, a rule. And you know what? I don't remember where I found it, but, um, when you're sizing wire, uh, for the neutral or the grounded conductor, um, you absolutely must use the same gauge wire that you're using on the current carrying ungrounded conductors. So, um, the proper answer here would be, uh, people see this grounded conductor, and if you're, what color would it be, thinking that that's the grounding conductor? Um, and, you know, that that might be the six gauge green that goes, I mean, inside the circuit, or six gauge bare wire, right? So, we, we know about that one. Um, and so, if you look at grounded and they see grounding, it's easy to get this one mistaken. But when you're talking about the grounded conductor, it must be white, and if the conductors on the circuit are, um, ten gauge conductors, then it must match that. Okay? Um, and so, that's what you size, even though that may not be carrying, um, you know, current. And the example Mike was talking about was on the AC side, where the neutral was probably not carrying current, and he was saying, you know, you know, under normal circumstances, I don't think that has to be the same size. But, um, it does. It has to be the same size as the, uh, live, um, conductors. And you found that in the code book. Okay. So, um, these are the ten that try to get you into looking through the code book. You can see from what happened to me with problem number seven, that even when you're reading through these things and you're, you know, studying this stuff, Article two hundred deals with so many important areas, um, starting, you know, with, um, Article, uh, two-ten... It gets into, um, sorry, Article two hu- two thirty, which gets into, uh, installation requirements for service conductors and equipment. Uh, that's, you know, knowing what different conduits are, knowing the, how you're allowed to, uh, put all that together over current, over current protection, or just, um, all kinds of... Getting back to Article, um, two thirty for just a second, um, really do need to spend some time with Article two thirty if you haven't done a lot of work in choosing the right kind of conduit and understanding where the answers are in here. You will get this book, uh, but you need to know where to look something up related to conduit and related to, um, the, the rules surrounding different, uh, installation requirements for raceway in different situations. So, know what's here, know what's not here. The mounting supports, I believe, um, is Article two thirty dot fifty-one. I had somebody ask me about that. Um, so, two thirty says you have the one that, uh, service interest cables shall be supported by straps or other approved means within three hundred, twelve inches from every service head, and then thirty inches in intervals not exceeding thirty inches in between. So, the answer, found it now, is, uh, two thirty dot fifty-one for the, um, question I have on the chat here. What is the chart? And that's where it shows that. Um, also, Table three, two thirty dot fifty-one C also talks about supports. So, that's where that is. So, within Article two thirty, there's rules respect to disconnects, know, knowing the maximum number of disconnects. Um, this says, this has definitely been on there. I'm gonna call your attention in the code book to page two thirty dot fifty-six, which is seventy dash eighty-four. Um, let's see if I can bring that back up, my code book here. Um, what page I'm on? Three hundred years, so I wanna be at... Actually, I'll just page in the PDF, I'm just saying, so, two thirty dot fifty-one. Kinda take a minute to come around. No matches. Interesting. All right, well, let's go back to it. I'm gonna find it myself. Page one forty, so I'm four pages off. Let's see what I mean, this is a blank page. Wanted to call your attention to this.
Come here, Garrett.
Um...
Come here, Garrett. What a work by electrical.
Interesting. Um...
It's the code book.
Okay. Uh, I wanted to show, uh, two thirty, uh, seventy-one, three R. Okay. Page eighty-seven in my PDF. The service disconnect means for each service permitted by two thirty point two for each of the set service conductors, number one, not more than six switches or sets of circuit breakers or a combination of not more than six switches or circuit breakers, mounted on a single enclosure, in a group of enclosures, or on a switchboard. And that, so this, this is important for, um, disconnecting a solar system. You have, uh, they wanna, they have a, a breaker in the combiner box, and they have a breaker and a disconnect. You have another disconnect in the, um, that might come with the actual inverter, and you've got the AC disconnect on the inverter, and the AC disconnect coming out the inverter. You start looking at all the different, um, disconnecting means. You may have to make sure at the end of the day that it does not add up to more than six. Okay? That's important. I've seen that one on the exam. Um...
Yeah. Know how many disconnects you have and what wires you need.
Okay. So, uh, do spend some time and know what is in, uh, lightning arresters?
Yeah.
So, surge arresters are called in accordance with the requirements of Article two eighty, should be committed on ungrounded arresters, you know, is there. Um, there's different, make sure you, they could give you a situation on whether or not a disconnect is considered to be readily accessible. So, that's something that in Article two thirty, zero five, couple of pages down, is a new, uh, requirement. It is spelled out more clearly on page eighty-eight in the code book. I'm ahead of it.
Garrett, where are you at now?
Somebody's, I need to mute somebody here.
Why you out there?
Can't really tell who that is.
Oh, Sid, you're supposed to be wiring your electronics.
All right, Clayton, I'm gonna have to mute you. How do I do it? Clayton, and you... Sorry, Clayton. Okay. All right. Sorry, that's you, that's what's distracting. Um, it is Sunday.
Let's go, babe. What do you like to eat?
Okay. All right. So...
Huh?
This where it says, in this case, it needs to be operated by a mechanic who is readily accessible. Um, so, the second floor is okay. Um, it just can't be something that requires something to be taken apart, or something to be climbed over, or something that restricts somebody from getting to where they can actually disconnect. Okay? Starting in Article two forty is where you get into overcurrent protection. So, remember, our chapters one through, um, chapters one through, uh, four are general situations, and so, uh, what I wanted to do was kind of get you into these areas of the code book that you may or may not have ventured into yet, and know that there's nothing to be afraid of, and that, um, uh, you need to be able to familiarize yourself where you find things in these sections. So, two forty is where you're gonna find things on overcurrent protection. Um, this gives you some of the, uh, breakdown, remember there was something about the sizing of individual fuses. When you're sizing in a combiner box, and each string is coming in, landing on its own positive, um, fuse holder, each time you have more than, um, two incoming strings, then that, those, uh, incoming strings have to be fused in the combiner box. And depending on the, um, amperage rating of the string, again, it's before you get any power conditioning unit, so you are, it would be subject to irradiance spike, and it would be running for longer than three hours. So, when you're sizing the fuses in those, in that combiner box, um, it would be whatever the amperage rating is of that string. Let's say it's seven point eight, times one point two five for the irradiance spike, times one point two five for continuous duty, comes out to a, uh, an amperage rating of twelve point one eight. Um, so, the minimum sized fuse that you'd have to have in, in, um, that fuse holder, here's what they come in, okay? So, they come in ratings of... This, this is in standard circuit breakers, but in these little fuses, they usually come up, come in one amp increments up to fifteen. So, a twelve amp fuse would not work. Here we go. You know, that's just little fuses. These are the standard sizes. Is here in Article two forty. So, if it can't be twelve amp, you're, it would have to be a thirteen amp fuse. Not finding where this, that they come up. I know it's in here. And then, of course, you have the other ones. We'll keep going down here. Okay. Ah, not finding it. Um, but, but say, you know, depending on the, you just need to know that you take the string amperage rating, multiply it by, and then you would upside it to the next, by 1.25, then 1.25, and you upside it to the next greatest, um, fuse will go in those fuse holders. All right. Um... All the twigs you want to find. Finding it. Two floors, so... Another thing to note while we're on the subject, is you cannot use those fuse holders as a breaker. Um, that is not an acceptable way to open maintenance. All right, I'm going to move on. Um, hopefully, I'll come across that one. What it wants to know. Okay, so, Article 240 deals with overcurrent protection, and, uh... These are some of those accessibility issues. Overcurrent shall not, shall be readily accessible, be installed so that the center of the grip of the operating handle of a circuit, when it's in its highest position, is not more than 2.0 meters, which is six foot, seven inches above the floor or working platform, unless one of the following applies. So, they could give you this one. This is where that readily accessible. Each occupant may have ready access to overcurrent devices. So, again, this is the, some of the, you know, they may get into, where would you find information dealing with overcurrent devices? What does it mean to be protected from physical damage? What does it mean in terms of damp and wet locations? Um, and then, that 312.2 would be, um, how you comply with those wet and damp locations. You have to look to that table. They can be mounted, they must be mounted in a vertical position, unless that is shown to be impractical. And then, sometimes that requires special permission, spending, um, what's allowable there in 240, in accordance with 240.81. So, then you have to look at what 240.81 says to know whether, um, you're complying with that. And then, based on the question, that could be something that they do. But, um... I thought I was getting closer to where those little fuses are listed in terms of being one amp apart, uh, but I... Cartridge fuses. Not seeing where that is. Let me move in here. All right. Um, Article 250 gets into grounding. And I do know that Janet Hughes is set to provide, um, a lot of information on grounding, and, uh, so I'm going to, I'm not going to cover that too much. What I want to do in the little bit of time I have left today is, uh, move into Article 690, and show you some of the new things there that I know, the things that I saw on my version of the exam, that I want to make sure are things you can find quickly. Taking you through all the wires. Moving back to that last one. I don't see. I've been wanting to hold big fuses. What are you talking about? 340. U F cables shall be permitted as follows. Hey, let's see what Article 690.31 says. Let me get there. Um, I do know there's a chart in Article 300 that came up that I definitely had to spend some time on during the exam. And that was the one that deals with all the different insulation types. Um... I want to call your attention to that before I jump all the way out of this. There's a couple of chapters here. Okay. Table 310. Dot 104, which is on page 168 in the code book, and probably like 170 in my PDF. Um, okay. There will be some calls during the exam to be able to understand how to look and read this table. Um, get away from these, uh, okay. So, it gives you the different maximum operating temperatures for different insulation types. So, they could give you something along those lines. Um, they'll give you the trade name, the different things for the insulation, and then where, what type of conditions they are, uh, the outer covering. So, um, these are all the conductors rated, uh, and installations rated for 600 volts, which would, um, explains, so depending on the size of the cabling, um, moisture resistant cables, um, what these different things mean. So, thermoset, RHH, is good up to 90 degrees Celsius in damp and, uh, dry and damp locations. And then, these are the sizes, um, flame retardant, non-metallic covering. So, uh, the, know how to look this table to check out a, uh, an insulation rating that they give you. What that dash two means usually is that it's, um, good for 90 degree rating, um, for wet locations. Um, and, and you have silicon. And one thing I thought was interesting in here was that, um, ratings on what is most commonly used in the field is THHN. So, the T stands for thermoplastic. Um, the H, each one of these things, they, uh, stands for heat resistant. Um, W for wet, and, uh, flame. So, this tells you what the, uh, different cables are. And there was one that dealt with, um, power cables that was on the test. So, the difference between R and XW, XHH, and XHHW2, uh, there's a fine print note in, in the Article 310 that is still there, um, right at the top of this page. Whoops. And I, um, I've mentioned this to, uh, electricians who never caught this one. Got myself back in the page here, sorry about that. Okay. Okay. It says, we all use, in lots of examples you see in the, um, informational note. Thermoplastic insulation may stiffen at temperatures lower than 10 degrees Celsius, um, and it may also be deformed at normal temperatures or subject to pressure such as points of support. Thermoplastic insulations were used on DC circuits in wet location may result in electroendosmosis between conductor and insulation. So, we're using THHN coming out of the junction box to a combiner box in a wet location. Uh, electroendosmosis, I Googled it, and basically, it needs breakdown in the, in the insulation. So, technically, if that's the case, any of these thermoplastic cables should not really be used on the DC side. And when you look at what we typically use, um, I've seen tons of articles by John Wild and other people that mention, you know, wire sizing, and they're talking about using, um, THHN cable. And, um, really, what they ought to be using is either RHW, RH4, um, for moisture and wet, dry and damp locations. Um, not damp and wet locations, excuse me, on the DC side, they really ought to be using not the thermoplastic, but the thermoset, uh, which is the XHH, or XHHW. Uh, I don't know. You read that fine print note? It's not, um, a requirement, just an informational note. And, uh, THHN and THWN are the most common wires that people carry. Uh, but on the DC side, if you adhere to that informational note, um, maybe that shouldn't be used. Uh, but there's, as you go down, it lists like what is used for, um, like, uh, power cables. The question that I had, um, was, was dealt with that. Which is the best kind used on power cables? And it dealt with the insulation that you needed it to have according to that cable. So, um, definitely would have to be resistant, and, um, flame retardant would be a good thing. Um... Sheen tool wiring and, uh, in wet locations. So, you got to read, know how to read that to know whether it would be appropriate. Okay, so, I just want to call your attention to that table as well that came up. All right, on to Article 690. So, the table, the table that deals with, um, insulation is in Chapter 3, section 310, table 310.104. Hopefully, we're getting into Articles 20 now. Okay. So, uh, I'm sure that most of you at this point have gotten really familiar with this. My point of what I want to do here, not to start diving into Article 690 like you've never seen it before, um, but just know one thing. Uh, there's great diagram when you get questions on source circuits, output circuits, blocking diodes, bypass diodes. Right at the beginning of this section of the code book, some of these things are defined for you right there, as well as in Article 100. But don't let questions like that stop you. They do sometimes come up, and there are places in the code book where you can get those definitions. Um, charge controllers, equipment, um, diversionary charge controller, that's something that would have to have a load to take any excess and that diverts in a direct current system. Uh, hybrid, understand the difference in hybrid and bipolar. Hybrid means you've got multiple generating sources, or original generation from wind, solar, microhydro, generator, you know, diesel or propane generator. Um, in order to accommodate multiple inputting original generation sources, that's a hybrid system. Bimodal means really secondary storage. Storage coming from a power plant through the utility grid to you. So, they're not generating it over there. You're pulling, they're generating it, but you're pulling it in through the utility, so you're getting it as a secondary source. Batteries, they don't, batteries do not generate power, they store power. If your system pulls from either the grid or a battery bank, it's bimodal. And that battery is charged by a primary source, but the battery itself is not capable of charging itself by itself. It's a secondary source of power into your system. So, that would be bimodal, okay? Um, uh, blocking diode and, um, bypass diode, you have the difference there. Difference between a module and a panel, technical, but, uh, the difference between a PV input source circuits and output circuits. Um, the array itself is the source of power. Some's landing on the array, so the cable's coming from the array into the combiner box, they are bringing that power from its source. Power circuits, if you had to think of it, you'd have called it that. Um, so, the photovoltaic system voltage is the direct current of any photovoltaic source or photovoltaic output circuit. For multi-layer installations, it's the highest voltage between any two DC conductors. Okay, so, uh, that, when they talk about what's the system voltage, that's just what you have. Maximum system voltage takes what that is and applies any temperature corrections to it. Um, all right. So, just understanding in the question how you do those. An article in, um, tells you, uh, where conductors of more than one PV system occupy the same junction box. They must be grouped separately by wire tires, wire ties, or similar means, at least once, and then be grouped at intervals not to exceed six feet. Okay? So, uh, in old, this is new, but this 2011 code, that was not in there before. You could take multiple systems and throw them into same, and I've seen giant, you know, utility scale wiring things, where it's all just grouped together as one big bunch tied together with tie wraps. Um, and also remember that when you, you know, even if that's in free air, uh, that can be code violation if the ones on the inside of that bundle really can't be considered in free air anymore. And there's, I got to do a special model electrician on, on how you would, um, tie those conductors if they're going to be clumped together, even though they may not be a conduit. Uh, where do you draw the line between whether they're in free air or they're actually, you know, exposed to, to heat element and heating up beyond what you might think because they're in the center of a clump? So, there's, we're going to probably see some guidance about that in code corner articles and things coming up. Because that's something that people are starting to think about in these big installations. Um, so, uh, okay. Things are added here. Um, where things can be routed. Okay, so, photovoltaic source and output conductors in and out of conduit and inside of a building shall be routed along a building or structural members such as beams, raptors, structures, or columns, or the location of those structural members can be determined by observation. Or circuits are embedded in built-up laminate or membrane roofing materials, um, and roof areas not covered by PV modules and associated equipment. The location of the circuits shall be clearly marked. This is new. This means you've got a label on the outside of the conduit if that conduit contains CD cables. That is not the case. And you should do that with a, with a distance with which you're supposed to make those identifications, and I believe, um, is, I mean, somewhere in the code book, it says where those should be, how often those, that labeling should be, you will, not that in seconds. Um... Bipolar systems, there's another thing. There's co, there's information here about bipolar systems. I'm not an expert on that area. I do remember that, uh, there was a question about that. It wasn't a very complicated question, but it was... It wasn't a very complicated question, but it dealt with maximum system voltage of a bipolar system being the absolute sum of the absolute value of the negative side and the positive side. And then if that is under a certain temperature situation, uh, corrected for temperature. I don't want to get into that right now, but there are different kinds of bipolar systems and, uh, if it's, unless it's otherwise specified, that was just one of the questions in the study guide that we should kind of look at. Um, so, uh, ground fault protection, um, grounded DC photovoltaic rays should be provided with DC ground fault protection in the requirements of six ninety point five A through C. For fire hazards, ungrounded PV systems shall comply with six ninety dot thirty five. Exception, um, if they're all isolated from the building, they can have, be permitted without that. And, uh, photowaves installed other than dwelling units shall be permitted without ground fault protection if each equipment grounded conductor is in accordance with six ninety dot forty five. So, look at that. Okay, so we've been over many, many times, uh, what, you know, this, this whole thing on, um, temperature correction. So I'm, I'm not gonna spend too much time on that. This is the table which was going over yesterday. And really, um, my take on temperature correction that might make it simpler, uh, is this. Um, you know, in every other form of electrical equipment, when you look at what it's rated to produce, it says it's X number of watts plugged into the wall in an outlet, it's a one twenty volt. So watts divided by volts gives you amps, right? Very simple way to calculate all those circuits. Um, and, you know, you, and any piece of electrical gear is rated and, and when the power comes in over the power line, plus or minus two volts one way or the other, depending where you are, you know, in that, uh, grid. Your, your, your voltage is pretty much constant. And so, um, uh, and same, same with the amperage based on what the piece of electronic equipment needs. So in the regular world of electrical, uh, things are very predictable in terms of their watts, voltage and amperage characteristics. With solar, um, they chose these things they called standard test conditions at twenty five degrees Celsius and a thousand watts per meter squared for, um, defining the voltage, rated voltage and the rated amperage. And those are not really magic numbers. Uh, twenty five degrees Celsius equates to about seventy two degrees Fahrenheit, which is the normal temperature at which most people are comfortable. A thousand amps, I'm sorry, a thousand watts per meter squared is the, uh, intensity of sunlight at noon on average in most places on earth. That's where they got those two numbers and they are not magic numbers. They are just the numbers that they chose so that then everybody could use the same conditions when they make PV equipment. So anytime a PV system is installed in conditions which are going to go outside of those two determining factors, temperature and intensity of light, they're gonna change with the output. And so the question you need to ask yourself then is, well, if they're gonna change, by how much, right? And so to answer that, you just think about, well, what is the change in temperature? So when you look at that calculation that's out there for, um, temperature correction, it says, okay, take the maximum voltage, worst case scenario you could ever see under an open circuit condition, VOC, because that's the end of the ID curve. And, uh, no matter where you are in terms of resistance, that's the highest voltage you could ever see because that's actually the voltage where you have no current flowing at all. So if I'm given two voltage characteristics, so operating voltage, VNP and VOC, and I want to compute a worst case scenario, I'm of course gonna choose VOC because I'm trying to take, it is my highest voltage I'm given in the module spec and add some kind of correction to it or adder based on some other temperature that I might see lower than twenty five degrees Celsius. So, and I have to pick which one to use to input into that formula. Of course I want the higher of the two because what I'm about to do is calculate an adder that's gonna make that VOC even higher. Because when temperatures go down, voltage goes up. And then the rest of that calculation is just like, okay, so by how much? Sometimes you're given temperature correction as a percentage of the VOC per degree Celsius. So if I can look at my VOC and it's say point oh three five percent, if I multiply that times that and then I use that little adder for every degree Celsius difference than I am from that rated twenty five degrees, that's gonna tell me how much I need to add, right? Sometimes you're giving it as an actual number of volts or millivolts per degree Celsius. That makes it even easier because now you actually know, you know, how many millivolts you need to calculate based on the difference between that rated twenty five degrees Celsius and that expected low. So don't get too bent out of shape about that calculation. Think about what you're doing. You're adjusting the expected output based on environmental conditions and using this manufacturer's rated adjustment factor, that temperature correction factor. You're just plugging it in and basing that off your worst case scenario, highest voltage you could ever see, VOC, and then calculating an adder that's gonna add per module and then you multiply that by the number of modules in the string. It's your, it's that by how much, right? So that's all you're doing with that formula. And when you sit down and break it down, don't try to memorize the formula, think about what you're doing and you won't, you won't have to memorize. Because it makes sense what you would plug in, why you would plug it in and what those different things need. Look at your unit. Is it in millivolts per degree Celsius or is it in percent V per degree Celsius? That percent V means a certain percentage of the VOC per degree Celsius. And then boom, you just plug it into the formula. So I, for a long time, that was, you know, this is the difference between memorizing and learning. Once you understand what that calculation means, they can never stump you, okay? All right, um, getting on to, um, six ninety point eight, calculating the max current. So what does max current mean? It means that they chose a thousand watts per meter squared when they said that module is gonna put out seven point eight three amps, right? That's what they said. Um, and it says right there under the label, this is that in the radius of one thousand watts per meter squared, okay? Well, that's not some magic number, um, that is the maximum, even though we call that a peak sun hour. Uh, there's a very good likelihood that you could see a radiant spike beyond that. I, I was in San Antonio doing a class where it was raining all morning and we came out at noon to do a lab and, uh, the sun just came out beyond the clouds and it was summertime and it was hot and between, um, you know, the, uh, intensity of the heat on the ground evaporating and the sun coming around behind the clouds. I held up my pyrimeter and I saw with my very own eyes in the radiance reading of one thousand two hundred and sixty. At that given moment, because of the radiant spike and the moisture and the water molecules in the air that were intensifying the, uh, the light, um, coming into my pyrimeter, whatever the module was saying, seven point eight three, if I put that module facing directly at the sun, right there, the same orientation of my pyrimeter, I'd need to multiply whatever rated voltage is by one point two six and see what it would actually be giving me. So when that, when the code says, what's the maximum circuit current you could get? They want to know in the, in the worst case scenario, what is the maximum current on that module? It's not what it's rated at. It's what it's rated at times what the code is happy with saying, a, a, um, a maximum current and right there under number one shall be the sum of the parallel module rated short circuit currents multiplied by one hundred and twenty five percent. Okay? Period. That is max current. Under normal circumstances, if that system is only turned on for ten minutes or underneath that three hour continuous duty, let's say I turned on to those ten minutes when I had that pyrimeter at twelve sixty, right? I could easily see more than the rated current. And the maximum would be, according to the code, they're happy with one point two five or a hundred and twenty five percent, okay? So anywhere in that circuit where the modules are out there and they have their rated voltage and it's a good chance that they could be subject to an irradiance spike, whether it's the module wiring, the junction box, the disconnect, the binder box, anything up to any side on the DC where there's nothing to control that irradiance spike. Okay, you gotta figure in that irradiance spike of one hundred and twenty five percent could at any moment, any given moment in time, that that's current could be established from some conditions causing the intensity of the light to exceed well beyond that thousand watts per meter squared. Now, if you're sizing wire that's gonna be carrying current or overcurrent protection that needs to function properly for longer than three hours because that system's gonna be out there, that's where that extra hundred and twenty five percent comes from. When you look what it says, calculation of max current, maximum current for this specific circuit shall be calculated in accordance with six ninety point eight A one through A four, which says, uh, where the requirements of six ninety point eight A one, which is that first irradiance spike and B one, hmm, what did B one say? Um, not to share that's a continuous duty, okay, there's that one there, okay? Um, that B one deals with that shall be, photovoltaic system current shall be considered to be continuous. Boom, so that second hundred and twenty five percent has to do with that. And so, you know, I think this was written, this, this code edition talking about, um, whoops. Oh, where am I now? I think this code edition here in six ninety point eight, um, A one where that, that little thing was I just saw, okay, right there. An information note, I think that information note was added to help the teachers that teach that difference between, um, sometimes you use one point two five, sometimes you use one point five six. And, and I don't teach it that way. I teach it, where are you in the system and are you subject to irradiance spike, yes or no? That's max current. Then will you be subject to that current operating longer than three hours? That's the second hundred and twenty five percent. And by separating out the two, you'll, you won't ever put the wrong multiplier in the wrong place. Okay, um, so that's max current. And on the labeling, um, they're looking for instantaneous numbers, okay? Where they're requiring you to indicate four things. What's the rated current on this system, what's the rated voltage? That's from the minute you power it on, no irradiance, boom, what's it rated at according to the label on the system. But then when they say max current and, uh, max system voltage, that's where they want the, um, temperature corrected or, or potentially the radiance affected, um, numbers listed there. Okay. Ah, here it is. Right here, I found it. It wasn't in Article three hundred, it was here, I wonder. Let me get to my ultimate ten. Okay. Photovoltaic source circuits. Boom. Branch circuits with supplementary type overcurrent devices shall be permitted to provide overcurrent protection in photovoltaic source circuits. Um, they shall be accessible but shall not be required to be readily accessible. Standard values of supplementary overcurrent allowed by the section shall be in one ampere increments, starting at one up to fifteen. So where I did that calculation before, where we had a seven point eight amp, um, ISD times one point two five, times one point two five and I came out with twelve point one eight amps in that finger fuse, okay? That's where, um, I would have had to gone up to the thirteen amp mini fuse in those, uh, combiner box fuse holders, okay? So this is where it is. And boy, you can look forever in Article two forty for where you'd find what that increment can be. And if all you look for is Article, um, two forty for thinking about what size, um, uh, fuse should be in those combiner boxes, you would miss that there actually is such a thing as a thirteen amp mini fuse that would go in those combiner box fuse holders. And it's not in, um, higher standard values above fifteen for supplementary overcurrent devices shall be based on the standard sizes provided in two forty six A, which is where I was stuck. So, sorry for wasting your time, I knew somewhere in the code book it said that these other ones were available. You can expect a question on this because electricians, when they talk about overcurrent, they go right to Article two forty and don't realize that right here in the subsection here of a special circumstance, Chapter six, overrules what the general requirements are in Chapters one through four. Boom, here are those overcurrent rated, rated, um, devices that are in that combiner box, okay? Cool, I found it, so excited. Okay, uh, all right, we're moving right along. It's amazing what can get somebody, you know, excited again. I, I personally love getting back into the code book, getting ready for this because, um, so many old things you really know. And once you really know where things are and know that there's things in there, too, it gets me. Got me there, I was like, I knew that it was somewhere in the book where that was and this is what moves us time in the test. Wasn't where I thought it was. And, uh, that's where you sometimes have to really know the book. If it's not in two forty, where would it be? You know, try to go back, okay? Um, this is where we talk about, um, multi-wire branch circuits. You can eve, this is why, uh, this is particularly comes into play when you've got off-grid systems where you have a hundred and twenty volt inverter and you're supplying loads to a, um, branch, multi-wire branch circuit. This is a, a hall, the builder didn't know you were gonna take this home off the grid necessarily. And so the electrician came in the way they always do and had multi-drops on the same branch circuit. Now you have a, a problem. So if that's the case, um, you cannot supply single hundred and twenty volts, um, inverter on that branch circuit because that's gonna overload the neutral in that circuit, okay? So, um, you gotta make sure that it doesn't get wired that way or you will be violation of this law here. And there's where it's described, not law, but this section and part of it. Okay, all right, moving right along. Um, so many cool things in here. Backside circuit breakers, okay? Um, they could give you a situation, photovoltaic, the DC source circuits, DC output circuits are both for penetrating a building at a PV system, max voltage of eighty volts or greater shall be protected um, by enlisted DC arc fault circuit interruptors. This is new to the code. This is this whole deal that Rebecca Ren writes about so well in her article that came out in, um, SolarPro that I put on the reading list about, uh, that came out last year on, um, code changes to the, to the two thousand and eleven code. She and, uh, so an awesome, awesome article that talks about fault protection along with somebody else. And, uh, this is where they're talking about that. So they could give you a certain number of modules in a string, okay? Where maybe the rated module voltage, um, say it's a twenty, twenty-four volt system that's got a, um, module, two twenty-four volt nominal module that have a VOC of forty-two volts. Um, the TV, uh, maximum system voltage on that, um, could definitely exceed eighty volts at which point, yes, our fault protection would be applied, okay? Someone asked me a question here on temperature correction. Is there a common temperature coefficient if it's not labeled on the module? Yes. Um, if the temperature coefficient is not labeled, you can assume it's to be point oh five percent of the VOC per degree Celsius. Um, I know that's what's typically used when you're calculating for high temperatures when it's not really listed. Um, and, uh, that would be one to use. But the way the code says, okay? Um, if, if you don't have a temperature coefficient, you're supposed to use the VOC times that table value in six ninety point seven. You're not supposed to correct for low temperatures using some, um, common, you know, temperature coefficient. So don't fall into that trap. If, if, if you're having a module, it's an older module and it doesn't, and you can't find or it just doesn't provide in the manufacturer specs an actual temperature coefficient, you only use a temperature coefficient if it's given to you. If it isn't given to you, you use the table and then you use the, uh, either the ash ray, low temperature expected, ash ray tables, or you use the record load depending on the authority having jurisdiction, okay? All right, um, okay. Let me keep going, keep going, keep looking up here. Your DC, uh, your disconnecting devices must be DC rated, which means they have to Your DC, uh, your disconnecting devices must be DC rated, which means they have to handle up to 600 volts. Uh, this is almost always the case when you go for DC, and, and people know this when they're sizing their DC system. Um, and, and it has to be rated for DC up for 600, not AC. Um, same with all the overcurrent protection. Okay? Uh, moving through here. All right. Readily accessible overcurrent protection. Photovoltaic systems may not be installed in bathrooms, believe it or not, that was on mine. So, this is that, um, here we go, getting to 690.31. We've got to remember that related to a couple of things. So, installed in a, you know, outside of a building or structure or inside the nearest point of entrance of the system conductors. Um, they can have it located remote from the point of entry, but it cannot be installed in a bathroom. Three. Um, each photovoltaic system disconnecting needs to be marked that is, is, is being used as a PV system disconnect. And again, this is that, no more than six switches. So, here it is referenced twice. Um, can't be used with some other thing. Okay. One or more disconnecting needs shall be provided in each combiner box where conductors are sliced or overcurrent protection is provided. This disconnecting means they'll comply with following requirements. Located where accessible, lockable and externally operable. And, Jasons to, or integral with the combiner box. There's now several combiner boxes coming out with, um, disconnects and, uh, uh, breakers inside, which is great. You've even seen some where they actually have P, um, MC4 connectors, so you don't even have to wire the inside of the combiner box, which is cool. I am, over the time we had allotted for this, um, by a little bit here, it's 5:13. Um, I'm just going to keep flowing through Chapter 690 here. If you had not planned on spending more time, please, um, go ahead and jump off. We will be publishing this and, uh, you can get that later if you want to. Um, okay. Ah, here's that part on flexible cords and cables. Um, we're moving parts and this is why it's in there. So, flexible cords or cables, um, shall comply with Article 400 and shall be the type identified for hard service or portable power cable. So, they may ask you what that is, which means you'd have to go to Article 400 and, and find one that meets these requirements. You'd have to find a particular cable that had, that was rated for number one, um, portable power cable. So, that's what this tracking device is considered, suitable for extra hard usage, listed for outdoor use, water resistant and sunlight resistant. And when you find one that matches all those things, then you look for the one on the answer that, um, that it goes according to that. Okay? All right. So, these are the temperature correction factors for cabling, um, that comes right out. It's very similar to, uh, 310 when it comes to temperature correction. So, we're not going to get into that part today. Just trying to scroll through here in the last two seconds if there was anything that, um, I wanted to mention. Uh, I know that, um, there are things now that have been moved outside of Article, uh, 690. Um, one of them deals with charge controllers, um, and this one was on mine, so I want to go to that one real quick. Um, wait, this is it. So, it gave an example of the charge controller. This is it here. All right. This was on my test. Okay? This Article 690.72. So, I want to make sure you know that this is there. Equipment shall be provided to, um, control the charging process of the battery. It's not required where the design of the PV source circuit is matched the voltage rating and the charge concurrent, ah, I messed here. Is, um, will not be required, match the voltage rating and the charge control requirements of the interconnected battery cells and the maximum charging current multiplied by one hour is less than 3 percent of the rated battery capacity. So, for example, um, if you have a charge controller that, um, it's a small charge controller, for example, on a solar gate, the reason that, the reason that, I'm sorry, you have a, a, a PV panel, like a five watt module that's charging a 100 amp hour battery on, say, a solar gate, the reason why you don't need a charge controller in that situation is that the, um, the charging current of that five watt module, um, uh, which is five watts divided by 12 volts, um, would be, you know, very, let me see, five divided by 12 volts is about 0.416 amps. So, if the battery is rated at 100 amp hours, that's why you don't need that 0.416 times one hour. Okay? Um, is 0.416 amp hours. That's definitely less than 3 percent of the battery's rated capacity. Um, and so therefore, that's why you don't need a charge controller. So, that's a very easy problem for them to set up. A particular sized watt module that, with a voltage, nominal voltage, and, um, what amp hour the battery is, and then would or would you not need a charge controller in that situation? And that 3 percent is that threshold. Okay? That was one thing I definitely wanted to, uh, cover today. And there was a question about that on my exam. Um, okay. Um, also, battery enclosures, definitely understand those parameters. Um, there will be questions related to that. Uh, they have to have, you know, what the, uh, disconnect, non-load rates, rates which shall be permitted to either the disconnect, you know, with the disconnecting, with the fuse needs to be rated at, study that stuff. Um, and not really sure about this buck boost direct current converters. Something new added here. I might want to recommend you look at that. Battery cables. Okay? Article 400 is defined in Article 400 and sizes 2 oh, gauge and larger shall be permitted within the battery enclosure from battery terminal to a nearby junction box for their connection to an approved wiring method. So, what is the minimum size? 2 oh. Okay? And, um, then there are some, you know, codes to reference to systems over 600 volts where you would maybe see that on a D, on a utility scale system. Okay, uh, just wanted to see what it was in Article 700 that I know I wanted to cover. Just go to Article, if that's 705, it might have been. Dealing with, um, qualified persons. Um, okay, this is where, um, Article 700 is definitely something to know what's here and what's not here as I don't right now. I apologize. What I'm looking for, but just, uh, generally power supplies, when you have a generator involved. Okay? I wanted to get to Article 705. And then I'm going to sign off. I think that's to do with auxiliary power. There you go. Okay, so here's where, um, okay. This deals with hybrid systems, um, supply-side connections, so interconnected electric power production sources. This is part of the code that is outside of 690, okay? It's outside of Articles Chapters 1 through 4. And there are a lot of things in Article 705 that you've got to know. So, inasmuch as you're familiar with Article 690, please do not avoid or, uh, forget to be, know where things are and what is also here in Article 700. Okay? This is, uh, another whole set of codes that may apply in, um, situations dealing with source systems as they interconnected, supply-side tap or other things that for some reason are moved now outside of Article 705. And, um, we just describe in depth here in, uh, Article 700. I know that Mike Holt covers a lot of this as well. All right, so, uh, you can get, I hope you can get an electronic version of the code book where you can even use like the highlighting tool to start highlighting things that you find that deal with things we talked about today, things that you find in the Mike Holt book, um, some of the tables that we reviewed today. Um, one other thing I'm going to show you about that's in there that I can guarantee in the new, one of the big changes. They used to have a question on torque settings that, um, that is not, that was not, the place where you would look for torque settings was in the manufacturer's literature for even things like, um, uh, um, even things like, um, terminals in disconnect panel boards, uh, ratings on circuit breakers, um, inverters, uh, even torque settings on attachments for mounting hardware. Everything has a torque setting from the manufacturer in most cases, but in the absence of that, um, sometimes what would you do? There was nothing and the code book didn't provide any guidance. So, now, there is a recommended tightening torque table from UL Standard 46AB that can be used. And this is a new addition to the, uh, 2011 code book. So, depending on what your, you know, what wire, test conductor installed with, say, eight gauge wire in a slot, say, in a, um, oil slug or a, um, ground lug. Um, ground lug settings, Verndy does give you torque settings when you read the, the literature that comes with them or you go on their website. So, those have tight torque, torque settings. Um, and so, you may have a call during the exam to know that this table exists in the back of the code book and be able to read this table and understand it and look, um, at and apply a torque setting out of this chapter. This is something that's been missing from the code book for a long time that, um, they give you a slot width and they give you a, a gauge of the cable or they tell you it's square millimeter size. Anyway, where you could come back here and look at this torque, torque table, uh, you can expect to have to do that in this exam. Um, because this is something everybody's been waiting for and was a big addition to the book that I wanted to let you know was there. Okay? So, it's the manufacturer's literature is either missing or not there. Can't find it online or contacting the manufacturer. It's, um, something that just didn't come with it, um, and you need guidance. You now have it through Annex, but number 1, Annex I. Okay, so those are some really great things coming out in the code book. If you have any questions, you can send us an email, my email, just like, uh, all of ours here at C, R E D S O N at soulpowerpeople.com. Um, and well, I see some questions coming here in the chat room, uh, dealing with grounding, dealing with Article 705. This is stuff that's going to be covered in Monday night's session, um, but, uh, we, session, but we did want to get to you today, yesterday, um, when it comes to verifying the system design and, uh, understanding, you know, things that are important to do, choosing the right balance of system and equipment when you're, uh, designing and installing the system. Uh, there's a lot of overlap between content domain areas, number one and three, four, five, uh, even six. And so, uh, don't be afraid of the code book. Look at what's where and so that you know where things are located and look for cross references. Um, but be familiar and as you're studying from now on, you see a code reference, see something in the, in the, in the textbook or the dumb-up book that deals with codes, um, go to the code book and find it. Read what it says there. Read what it says and what it doesn't say. Read where else it's referenced. It says, go somewhere, it says, oh, that's, that's done in, comes from Article 690.31. Go to Article 690.31. See what Article 690.31 says and why it relates to what they're talking about somewhere back in Article 240 or Article 300. And get used to flipping back and forth to get to know where these multiple, um, references are and where you split hairs as far as which one applies. And for gosh's sake, don't forget to look at what part of the chapter you're in to know that you're in the right part that deals with the right thing. Section numbers doesn't include the part number, shows that on the number. You can easily look up the wrong thing and guess what? That's it. We'll have it on there as one of your traces. Just like I did and I didn't look at Part 8 on sizing, um, that grounding electrical conductor, which helped with DC. Okay, so thank you very much for your attention. It's 5:28. We went about a half an hour over. But I hope you got a lot out of this and, um, just for the experience, it goes more and more uh, as you work through the code book. And, um, I will be back to you and look forward to seeing everybody in Monday night's session. Okay, bye-bye.